Testing. Testing. Test. [Silence] Testing. 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 Testing.[116.13][116.20][S01.13][S01] Testing.[117.20][117.26][S01.26][Silence] Testing. 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 Testing.[122.53][122.60][S01.50][S01] Testing.[123.50][123.56][S01.56][S01] Testing.[124.56][124.63][S01.63][Silence][125.63]
I don't know that we have routinely done this. I'm, you know, kind of pausing to think what, where have CU's zoning approvals, notably conditional use permits been granted for businesses where licensure is required? We might be well advised to, to include such a requirement in any, in any conditional uses in the future. It just seems to make sense, but I don't want it to look like we're singling out one business, one applicant.
Right.
But if.
Scott, can you recap that for me? I couldn't hear him.
Uh, Greg's part? Do you mean or?
Yeah, it was very difficult to hear.
I apologize.
Do you want to go through?
Oh geez, the Cliff's Notes version of it, Darlene, I'm sorry. Usually not hearing me isn't one of the problems people complain about. It's, I, I just noted the city isn't primary when it comes to licensure. Again, that's a health department. That's their job as a delegated agency from the state. However, we're not creating any requirements anew here. They do exist and it's simply really cross referencing this zoning action to those requirements in the case of all three conditions that are under consideration to be added tonight. And in the future, we might do well, I can't think of specific examples, but when we're faced with applications for conditional uses that indeed if, if specific licensure or permits are required, that, that sort of catchall language go, go into those permits. But again, council's call.
I don't think we need conditional use permits for beauty salons and such, to my knowledge. I don't think they fall under conditional uses.
No, unless it was as a home occupation.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
No, but I mean.
I think Meridian Wellness too, because they've got several different types of services there, you know, so, and I don't know if they've required conditional use.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I believe when we did the home occupation, I thought we had something with licenses in it for the lady that was doing eyebrows or something like that. Thought there's something with a license.
There was discussion on that point.
Yeah.
License or permitting required.
Yep. I do believe we did talk to that when that was a home occupation.
I mean, I've got to admit, if, say if you get a conditional use permit for a gas station, we don't say, and by the way, you've got to make sure the State Department of Ways and Measures come out and test your pumps. That's a legal requirement, but again, that's council's call. There are public health requirements associated with these specific licensures. So that certainly would be an argument in favor of the redundant mention of these requirements, which are already out there in state law.
Okay, with all of that, we're still looking for a motion to do something. Yes, Mark?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit as recommended by the planning commission with the additions of six and seven that Mr. Buckley submitted and the comment that they show their license.
For license.
Art of commencing the use.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Well, second there. Council discussion. Yes, go ahead, Bonnie.
The way this is worded, I'm just curious if, let's say he didn't get a license or something went wrong, how much punishment is going to the owner of this property? Do you understand? Because it said something about losing your conditional use permit. Does that mean they lose their money that they paid for that also?
I would assume so. And there are also, you know, someone violating the zoning ordinance generally could be charged under the applicable penalty provision as well. Yeah, I don't know if, again, our, our legal counsel is relatively new to us, but I don't know if either of the gentlemen online have any comments. By the way, I was going to introduce them later in my presentation, but we have Sean Griffin and Andrew Adams from Weston Dunn joining us via teleconference tonight. I'm not sure if we have audio for them or not. I'm hoping we do.
How we do.
We're present and Attorney Adams and I are both able to hear. And yeah, what you're speculating is our understanding, granted, like you said, we're new, but yeah, that would be our understanding of the code as well. Yeah, so if we, that would be the case where licensure were not to be obtained, then we'd have a violation of the zoning ordinance then, and then it would be subject to the forfeiture procedure under the city zoning ordinance.
Does that work for you, Bonnie?
So, but my question was how much punishment would the owner of the property? Because this person who's, the tattoo parlor is rental.
Again, I'll defer to our attorneys. I don't think any enforcement action, it doesn't seem to me would apply to the property owner if, if they're not a principal in the business that's being conducted there. The enforcement action would be relative to the business granted the CU P. But again, I welcome input from the attorneys because I'm talking too much and I'm just a bureaucrat.
Any comments, attorneys?
We can certainly, yes, the forfeiture procedure would certainly apply under Wisconsin laws that business owner operating in violation of the zoning code. We need to get back to you on that. Of course, there's prosecutorial discretion and we wouldn't, the city wouldn't have to prosecute any violations that it wouldn't desire to. But it would be my understanding of the zoning ordinance generally and Wisconsin law generally, that if the city did desire to, it could prosecute violations against the property owner as well.
That would be within the city's discretion.
Apply to both of them, so it is something that could be applied against both of them if that was decided.
Okay. See, I did talk to the.
Again, the city has that discretion to decide who to enforce the ordinance and the forfeitures against if any of them, again, that's prosecutorial discretion. The city is not required to vigorously prosecute every violation of the ordinance that it discovers.
Communication going on, you know, through the social media and stuff like that. And I wanted him to make sure that he was aware of what they were saying about him because I didn't know if he would get into trouble. And he said that, well, the health department is supposed to take care of that, just like you thought. And that's why I'm asking these questions, to make sure. I didn't know if this addition would get him into trouble because he's going into this with a good faith thing, you know, the owner of the property.
Based on what the attorney said, I would say it would not get him into any more trouble than he might potentially get into as the property owner, given prosecutorial discretion by the city in enforcing its ordinance. At the end of the day, what you'd said about his statement, it's right, that we're all relying primarily on these licensure issues for the county to do its job, and I fully expect they will.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Tim.
It says if any of the leases change, they'd have to resubmit a new permit.
That's my understanding.
And how much is a permit?
Conditional use permit application is $350, most of which goes for the requisite legal ads for the hearing.
I would think as long as someone from the original permit would be on there, that they wouldn't have to get a new one.
When you say that someone, that could either be the same owner of the property or the same tenant.
Yep. Well, if another tattooist comes in here whose license, that's changes what the lease agreement is, according to this, they'd have to resubmit a new.
As this is written, that, that would be the case. And it would be within the council's discretion to change that if you wish.
I think most of ours are written like that. If that person who is getting the CU decides to stop doing the business and even sells it, that they, that the next individual or business would have to come before for another conditional use. That's pretty standard.
I kind of read it as if they had to put in another tattooist that they have to.
Oh, you're talking like employees.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so not necessarily the applicant. If the applicant got employees, I don't think that would require a new CU.
New attorneys, but my, my read of it was if Mr. and Ms. Calderon were no longer the tenants of, of the property or probably, or a corporate entity under, under their control if they had an LLC or something, but if, if it was somebody else as tenant, and it might be another tattooist.
I think he's talking if both of those have employees.
Yeah.
So if they have a third tattooist that worked with them, not changing the tenant, though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see this applying in any way to employees.
Right. And I think that that's what Tim's asking.
Yeah.
I don't think it, yes.
Shouldn't matter because this is just.
Well, that's where it's, I would argue too, as this is written, if either of the two principals aren't licensed and aren't doing tattoo work, they're not in violation. But anybody who is doing tattoo work there, per this condition, would need to be licensed.
Correct.
Yes. They also be the tenant?
I, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think they should have to be the tenant.
If they have employees, the employees typically wouldn't sign on to the lease or be bound to the premises in any way. Again, I'll defer to our attorneys, but I, I think this C, this conditional use permit applies to the Calderons as tenants, as less, as lessees of that space for the tattoo business. They could have employees.
Wouldn't any additional employees be covered under item seven? An individual requires a license?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so that should probably answer that one then. Any individual applying tattoos or doing body piercings at this location must hold a valid practitioner's license issued by the state of Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services. So that would apply to the employee under the Calderons.
Makes sense, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just, I know a lot of them are kind of like beauty salons where you rent the space. They come in and get a chair and.
If I may, this is Andrew Adams. The permit attaches to the, it, it's allowing this use on the property, the Calderons being the tenants, their interest in the property is, is what's being affected by this permit. So like you were saying, seven, allowing an individual to apply tattoos as long as they have the proper license, that's going to apply to any employees that they have. Despite the fact that the permit issued to the Calderon, the allowance granted by the permit is to anybody that they're working on the property.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brandt.
Aye.
Tim Patri.
Aye.
Bonnie Schimelunas.
Aye.
Scott Stickness.
Aye.
Adam Husker.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Markbittner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
All in favor.
Awesome, thank you everyone. Great discussion. Onto the second public hearing this evening. We have a public hearing regarding proposed Main Street and Waterfront Corridor Overlay District. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the zoning overlay district as recommended by the plan commission. Greg.
Special estimate or special levy, if you will, in support of the downtown Main Street program. This area includes about 130 properties. It includes a variety of existing, I'll call it, underlying zoning. Lot of B1 business zoning up and down the Main Street and the adjacent streets. It includes a good amount of industrial zoning, both vacant industrial property like the former Hamilton site or the Bob Burrows site behind Kurtz's. It includes active manufacturing facilities that are zoned I1 or I2, including Metalware, Karenette, those are the two that come to mind right away. It also includes residential properties, both multifamily, one and two family residential. The intent of the overlay district, pretty much as stated in the cover memo that went out with legal notice to property owners in the district, is to identify certain uses that would be prohibited within the boundaries of the overlay district, even if such uses are currently listed as permitted or conditional uses in the underlying zoning district. Now, there's a relatively short list of such prohibited uses that's found in section C of the proposed amendment, and I'll, I'll refer you to that. That's page 10 of your agenda packet. Those include self-storage facilities, open outdoor storage, parking lots as a principal use. Now, again, this is, this would prohibit establishing these uses from the point of the effective date of this ordinance forward. They would be existing non-conforming. So again, self-storage facilities, open outdoor storage, parking lots as a principal use. There's a reference here to sexually oriented businesses, but then it really refers you to, to section nine eight of the code, but I, I think that's a use sometimes you certainly hear concerns about in downtown areas. Junkyards and recycling of scrap and waste materials with outdoor storage. So those seven, is it seven reference uses out of the entire universe of potential uses in the, in the various zoning districts are what would be prohibited from this point forward if this ordinance is adopted. I would remind council, it was only a few months ago, there was a proposal for self-storage warehouses or mini storage, whatever you want to call it, on an industrially zoned district in the downtown area. That conditional use permit was denied. There was a hue and cry from the public, how could this happen? Well, it could happen because potentially, storage of that type is a conditional use in the I district. So this doesn't just target that particular use, but it, it lists it among seven different uses that plan commission felt generally would be of concern if they happened in the city's downtown. Doesn't affect industrial business or residential zoning districts outside of this downtown district. They fall under whatever the base zoning is. Secondly, the proposed ordinance amendment would set some building design standards for new construction and building additions within the overlay district. And those are laid out in section D, starting on packet page number 10. I'm, yeah, building design standards. There is a specific carve out in the ordinance language that these design standards would not apply to single family, either existing or new single family, construction within the district. So a mailing went out from the city, as required by city ordinance, to all the property owners within the bid district that are potentially impacted by this ordinance change. I know that last week, the Two Rivers Main Street program also, Jason Ring distributed to their mailing list, which includes tenants as well as property owners, notification of this proposed ordinance amendment. So that's what brings it here tonight, and there is the opportunity, and I think we have a number of people that would like to address it with council during the public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg.
Scott. Greg, you might want to add B on our copy that everyone didn't see that. You've added an addition.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
The storage.
Um, I, thank you. I, again, bear with me, we don't have a city planner right now, so this happened fairly last minute today. I can tell you that, I can tell you that I'm not doing very good with the visuals here. Based on feedback I have heard at meetings of the city's Main Street organization, I, I heard a couple of things in the way of feedback under the prohibited uses listing. Then Jason Ring might want to speak to that too. But one concern was, does the prohibition on outdoors, open outdoor storage under 4B preclude outdoor display of merchandise by businesses? Now, honestly, right now, if you look at our zoning code, you're hard pressed to find where it overtly permits outdoor display. We do allow it under the public works section of the code because downtown area businesses can display merchandise in the public right of way on the sidewalk, right up next to their building. I forget if it's up to 24 or 30 inches from the storefront. So in any event, in light of that concern, and our attorneys probably just saw this about half an hour ago, I've added the language in red there to what was proposed by the plan commission, stating with regard to the prohibition on open outdoor storage, provided, however, that this prohibition shall not be construed as prohibiting the outdoor display of merchandise offered for sale or rental, could be bicycles or kayaks or something, from the premises to the extent permitted by the zoning ordinance or other city ordinances. We might want to revisit that outdoor storage thing in the future, so rather than prescribing it here, simply a statement that it's not meant to prohibit or restrict outdoor display of merchandise, as you might be allowed to do in other parts of the code. I didn't do a markup, but I would also note, I heard from the Main Street Board at two meetings where this was reviewed, some concerns about 4D, the prohibition on establishing new parking lots as a principal use, excluding municipal parking. The intent there was to discourage a sort of a gap-toothed looking downtown, where you see a building, a parking lot, a building, a parking lot. But parking is a practical consideration. Sometimes businesses need to acquire parcels, sometimes on a side street near the back door. We have examples of that. For parking, questions came up to some of the council members about a couple of the vacant gas station properties on the Main Street. Would we be better off if those were nice, pretty parking lots instead of in their current state? Kind of hard to argue that. So I didn't mark that one up, but council might want to consider whether you wish to strike 4D. That's the extent of my, my staff input on that. I know there are other concerns and questions out there. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder, Mark.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, so if you wish to speak about this topic and this topic only, please step up to the podium on your left. There will be three calls. And when you step up there, please give your name and address for the record. Opening up the first call for this public hearing. Right behind you, Mark. Mark, go ahead.
How's everybody doing today?
Doing well, how are you?
Very good. My name's Mark Gordon, 3708 Bellevue Place. So I'm just going to kind of recap off of Mr. Buckley's comment on page two, number, number four, letter D. Can you give me the definition of parking lot as a principal use?
I would say parking lot where there's not a building on the parcel.
So if someone would turn any of them parking lots into, say, Tesla charging stations, do you consider that a parking lot?
I expect that would be an accessory use to a parking lot as a principal use. That's my off the cuff answer because it's the sort of thing you might expect to find in a parking lot.
I guess my point is that I either want to see that stricken or at least expanded with better explanation.
And this isn't intended to prohibit, say somebody buys a vacant restaurant on the Main Street, for example, tears it down, puts a building there with surface parking, not prohibiting that, but the idea is if approved, it would, it would prohibit purchasing a building within this area for the sole purpose of, well, either a vacant lot or a building, creating a parking lot as the sole use for a parcel.
What, what's the, what's the condition of parking? Length of time? Too many cars?
A parking lot is a parking lot, so as far as conditions of the parking, that's up to the property owner. Generally, in this area of the city, at least between Jefferson and Adams, from the bridge by McDonald's to 22nd, there's not a zoning code parking requirement for most uses. So the city has, through the years, kind of gone light there because it's a downtown and sometimes it's hard to meet certain parking requirements, but I don't know if that answers your question fully.
I guess I just want to see that with better explanation and not limited, limited. I mean, it's pretty vague.
Well, parking lot as a principal use would pretty much preclude there being a building on the lot because if there's a business there and the parking lot serves the businesses, then an accessory use.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it should be either stricken or expanded with better explanation.
Good point.
You know, you're, you're eliminating things that, you know, I guess there are people like conditional. So if someone could come in and put an application saying they want to put them there, you're now limiting them, correct? Because you're going to consider that a parking lot.
Right, right. And that's, for that reason, council may want to strike that particular requirement.
I can pull people to downtown for better.
Could have, could have positive effects, could have negative effects, either way.
Either way. So that's just, I wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Bill Keel. My street address is 2112 43rd Street, and I'm also the owner of the Karenette Company, two properties here in town. My comments, I guess, and questions relate to the rationale for using the bid boundaries as the definition of the waterfront, waterfront improvement area or waterfront zoning area, if you will. To me, that seems less than logical. When I look at this map, which I assume everyone has seen, I don't think, put this map up for display, this is, it's the most irregular, crazy looking set of boundaries that I've seen on, on anything, right? It, it seems quite arbitrary to me to say, okay, now this is the area that we're going to use to define appropriate uses for our, our waterfront in Two Rivers. First of all, apparently by design, it excludes significant parts of the waterfront in our downtown, not only on the, the near downtown side, but on the east side of, of the East Twin River and on the west side of the West Twin River, or on the east side of the Western River, I should say, excuse me. Hypothetically, should the Susie Q Fish Market, for example, decide that they were going to discontinue business next week, and that someone who wanted to purchase that property decided they wanted to put self-storage there, your regulation wouldn't touch that based on the fact that we're using the existing bid boundary, which again, I, I see zero logic in that. If the council in its wisdom decides that we need to enforce a set of standards that the community feels is appropriate use for the downtown, I would strongly suggest that you take this, start with a clean sheet of paper, right? This, this bid map is, is nonsensical. Were you to do it properly, it would make sense to me that the eastern boundary of this such an area would be Lake Michigan, the southern boundary of such an area would be Lake Michigan, the western boundary perhaps is School Street, running the entire north to south area of, of the downtown, up to whatever area you decide might, might be an appropriate upper limit, northern limit, maybe 26th Street, for example, to capture the industrial use that's taking place north of 22nd Street Bridge. If, if that were to discontinue at some point, again, the city under this map would have no ability to have input on what might happen in, in that area as well. So I, I understand probably why this is being done. Greg referenced in his comments, well, we, we had a kind of a close call on this and yada, yada, yada. This, this feels expedient, right? This feels like this is an expeditious way to get something on the books. But if there's one thing I've learned in doing what I've been doing for nearly 25 years now, expeditiousness is usually not the right reason to do something, and it's often the wrong reason to do something. So I would encourage you to at least table this action for, for tonight. Take a, take a good, hard look at this, and if we're going to do something that we think benefits the city, then let's make sure we do it sensibly and logically, and not just something that's arbitrary based on, I mean, why not the, the voting districts or, or the garbage pickup route or whatever? I mean, this, this makes no sense. It's apples and oranges. This has nothing to do with, with the, the usages, other than the fact that it's an existing set of boundaries, that somebody can just slap a, slap another set of regulations on and say that we did the job. But I don't, I don't think that's the right way to do this. So that's, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Still on the first call, anyone else? Otherwise, I will close the first call and open up the second call about this public hearing. Seeing no one for the second call, close the second call and open up the third and final call. Yes, sir.
2313 Jefferson Street. He made some good points. I forgot his name. The, the only thing that I would say is that I'm very happy that overall that this is happening. One of the complaints around the storage units was very specifically that there was some massive. some massive gaps in our planning and zoning that didn't match the comprehensive plan. And that is the only thing that I will say as a comment, which I'm sure Mr. Buckley was going to say probably pretty soon, which is, I don't know if that map matches, but the absolute core thing to me, whether it's phase one or whatever it is, that we try to get closer to the comprehensive plan as far as, like, what are we hoping for out of this city, especially the downtown and other parts of the city? And does the zoning match that? Does this help that? And if it does, then great. If this is a quick way to get towards step one and then step two is expand the map further to other important things, great. But I do think it's very critical after the near miss with the storage units that we do something before somebody else throws in a CUP. Because if somebody does throw in a CUP between now and the time that this goes into effect, legally, you kind of have to do it unless you've got a really good reason. We struggled to stop the last one. So if this helps, cool. Though, as I said, the previous resident made some pretty solid points that are worth considering. So thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Amy Potoff, and I live at 1708 Jackson Street. So I drive that road by the fish market a lot. So I would be concerned to see, one of the things I noticed is the outdoor storage. It's one thing to have garages, but then to also have someone just putting up pop-up tents. And then, I lived in Florida for about seven years and they didn't have garages, and I was used to seeing what happens when people don't have garages. So the two previous people that spoke, I feel I agree with them, and I just wanted to mention that being on that other side of the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, I neglected to mention earlier, but council did, I wanted to mention for the record, council members did each receive a copy of a letter from Robert Burrows, the owner of an industrially-zoned vacant parcel downtown with frontage on the West Twin, expressing his concerns, and I think fair to say opposition to the proposed ordinance. So I just wanted to enter that for the record. Thanks for letting me merge in there, Jason.
No problem. Well, you already covered my other stuff, so. But I did want to get up and speak. I'm Jason Ring. My home address is 615 Buchholz Street, but I'm here representing the Two Rivers Main Street Organization. And Greg alluded to it earlier, but our organization spoke at great length a couple of meetings. We dedicated time to this topic. And we, I had people on both sides of the topic of the overlay. The two items that Greg brought up were the two big issues that we had, because parking is an issue in every downtown. Oftentimes, it's a perception of a problem and not a real problem, but that's still something we need to discuss and talk about. So any item that affects parking is something that we chime in on. And so we would like to see that item stricken or at least modified to allow for greater use. And it might not be taking out a building on Washington Street with frontage to replace it with a parking lot, but if there is a side street or another opportunity for a business to expand their parking or a business to purchase a business and then add parking in another location for them, that could be important to adding new business to our community. So something there to consider. And then the change to the outdoor storage item was addressed here, and I think that looks good and can work for businesses wanting to display their products outside. And I guess we hadn't really talked about the, using the bid boundary as the boundary for this downtown and waterfront overlay, but it is something that we discussed as bringing up by our board, where people perceive this as an item that's being led by the Main Street District. And we're not leading this. This is a city-led initiative that we're supporting, but it was interesting that it was brought up here. So something for you guys to discuss is what that boundary is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? The third and final call. Seeing nothing else, I will close the final third call, bring it back to council, and looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept it as is. I have some feelings on this too, but in order to talk about it, we need to have a motion on the floor. Therefore, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Second by Shannon. Thank you both. Council discussion.
I'll start out. There are a couple of things that, first, I'll go with, I'm not going to name names, but one of the gentlemen that were up here speaking, as far as the boundaries. It started, I think, with Main Street because a lot of it covers Main Street. Do I agree that we could expand that? Yes. I think the bid district covered a good majority of what we wanted to do and covers the downtown, which is probably the most frustrating area to see a lot of this stuff in. I don't think it's necessarily just the waterways. I think it's also just the downtown area in general that we wanted to cover. Hearing him speak, I think also says that there's more area to probably cover. So I will agree with that 100%. A couple of other things in this that I think could be changed. The parking lot, I'm kind of torn on because I don't want to see buildings in our downtown get torn down just to have parking. And like Greg said, all of a sudden, you got a building parking, building parking, and you get a whole checkers board out there. And I don't think that's good for the downtown either. With that said, though, there are a couple of properties, the gas stations is what I pointed out earlier, that could very well be used as parking and look a heck of a lot nicer than what they do now. We got two of them that are right by 22nd Street and the old Unimart and the old Speedway. For those that have lived here for a while will know what buildings I'm talking about. But other than those two buildings, any side street, I think, should be allowed to use for parking, because parking is always a real concern, as Jason said, in our downtown areas. I also, the exterior design, I'm not a huge fan of. I don't really like to tell people how they should do their buildings. Some people may have a particular use and needed to look a specific way for that use. And instead of kind of kicking them out and saying, hey, our downtown's not right for you, I would rather accept them in because there's some people that have some pretty cool ideas and the exterior may not fit what they're trying to do on the outside there. Also, the glass is a big one as well for me because 50% glass is kind of a lot, especially for some uses. I mean, if you go and you build a car wash, for instance, I don't know that you would make that 50% glass always. I know it says medical buildings, but I think there's others in there too that you don't really want 30% glass. And I know it excluded, I think, doctors' offices and stuff like that, I thought. But there may be others, I mean, liquor stores and all that, you may not want to have 50% glass. I don't know that those are always the best to have 50% glass. Also, I talked to Greg on this earlier, and I don't know how to put it, maybe the attorneys can chime in more on this, but I think even excessive smell is something you don't really want in your downtown. And I don't know how to exactly word it, to say what excessive smell is, but when I think of excessive smell, I think of the smell that I smell when I go to Manitowoc, and we love Red Arrow. It's nothing against them, but is that something you'd want in the heart of your downtown? I don't think most people walk in your downtown or in the park or at festivals would really care to smell that and would give them a very good experience of tourists and their downtown. We do have industrial uses within our downtown and within the bid district, so that could feasibly happen, or a smell that could possibly be worse than that. Again, I don't know how to word it, because what does excessive smell mean? I don't know. I know what I'm thinking in my head, but you kind of got to document that in a way that's understandable to people that are applying for a conditional use or want to have a building in the downtown.
If I can interject there too, that might be something to deal with separately under the nuisance provisions elsewhere in the code as opposed to zoning. It probably could fit in zoning, but kind of like the noise ordinance is separate, or there's been some very preliminary discussion or at least requests from the public about a possible lighting regulation ordinance, those sorts of things. Although the Plan Commission would be a logical place for input, those might end up residing other than in the zoning portion of the code.
Okay. That's pretty much all I had. So pretty much want to, like, I guess I'll just say his name, Bill. Like he said, to capture more, I didn't want to just kind of single them out, but I just did, sorry, Bill. But to capture more of the area and more of the waterfront, but I do think the bid district is a logical place to start up this, because we don't want to see a lot of the mentioned uses in our downtown. And I think that's kind of where we started with the bid district, but could certainly be expanded. Parking lot should be looked at, and then the design work, personally, I'm not a big fan of.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else? Council discussion? Yes, go ahead, buddy.
I think I'm, I agree with Mr. Keel. I would like to see this kind of looked at again before you brought it before us. I would be willing to vote yes for a lot of stuff, but some of it is hard. Do we have to, can you not make an ordinance that says no storage units, just period, in this particular area? Already, that was a proven area, the one that people are focused on. He had homeless people there already, and I do agree with that. I'm sorry that I don't remember her name, but storage units are used as residences. My sister lived in Madison and had a storage unit right across the street, and you could detect one of those odors because someone was living in there. And by the way, I think the odor of a brewery is one of those offensive smells. When I was a kid, we always had to walk past the brewery. Oh, I don't eat oatmeal to this day.
Or as they say in Kakana, it smells like jobs.
Anyway, I just, only because I'd like to see it revisited, not because I have a thing against most of it. Could you just say no storage units in these parts? That's my question. Because that's really the big thing, isn't it? Or am I wrong?
Well, actually, rather than seeming to, admittedly, some folks might say it looks a bit of a rifle shot, I can tell you, our planner at the time, Ms. Rungy, went through the code and said, what are some things that are listed as either permitted uses or, I think, as it turned out, mostly conditional uses that might happen in the zoning districts that comprise the downtown area as defined here for good or ill? And that's what came together. You certainly could do it on a more laser-focused way. We could go into each of the individual zoning districts and say, you know, you can have, for example, storage units as a conditional use in the I2, except this carved-out area. The overlay was seen as maybe a not totally expeditious way of doing it, but a way to at least have somewhat of a systematic approach. If I could, Mr. President, too, I don't disagree in any way with Mr. Keel's comment. It's kind of hard to ever look at that bid map and say it's based entirely in logic. It's, you might say, it ain't gerrymandered, but kind of looks like it might be. And there is active discussion going on at Main Street, and there's been at the bid board and council, and we meet with the bid board for several years about possibly modifying those boundaries. I guess I would suggest if the council is favorably inclined on this ordinance or something close to this ordinance with some changes, as have been discussed, you might consider adopting it tonight. We've done individual notice to about 130 property owners. You've heard the feedback, at least from the folks contained within these maybe convoluted boundaries, but I would, I'd encourage you, if you like the concept, consider acting to apply it within those boundaries. And as part of the motion, you want to direct it back to the Plan Commission to explore other areas adjacent to make for a more regular boundary, maybe a more logical boundary. That is another option available to you. Otherwise, we're going to be re-notifying the 130 property owners because there was no action, and that's not impossible to do, but that by itself could create confusion. Hey, what's the deal? I thought I was already notified of this. So it doesn't preclude adopting it with directing it right back to the Plan Commission to look at boundaries that maybe make more sense from a community-wide standpoint, from a master plan standpoint, as Mr. Robatai pointed out.
Scott, I'd like to, if we could resubmit the motion to expand the boundaries consideration, but do it, let's get it approved now the way it is so we can prevent any problems. I don't think the design standards are that restrictive, and I don't think that's a problem. I think the boundary's an issue. I think we've got covered the storage unit issue. We've covered that and protect, but this, if we accept it now, we prevent any immediate causes or violations, and we're running a risk at that earlier. So.
If we do wish to do that, Adam would have to change his motion to do that, if you would like to. Approve it as is.
Does anyone else have any discussion? Or just make sure, just make sure before we try and bring this back. Pick the parking thing up. Good with that.
Or redirect that to Plan Commission. Let you guys talk first.
Initially approve what we have with the intention that we are going to modify the boundaries would be my biggest modification. The other issues I think are pretty concise, and I don't think we need to modify. I don't see any confusion in the parking lot. I see exactly what it says, and we're not preventing parking in the future. No, we're not.
There we are.
No, it's a parking lot.
Can't build a parking lot.
Can't build one.
In the whole district, as it states.
Someone builds a three-story business or something, and they want to build a parking lot next door.
You can't build a parking lot just to have a parking lot. You can have a parking lot for a business.
Using some ability.
Yeah.
With a building on that property.
Section two and on the same parcel.
Correct.
Yeah. You could carve out currently vacant lots. That isn't going to help you with those two gas stations, as for instance.
Anyone else? So Mark would like to go back, approve it, and take or redo the boundary and have it sent back to Plan Commission.
Add a motion that way.
Correct. I'm just seeing if there's anyone else has any other thoughts or discussions. Bill said something about the parking lot.
Property as we go, so, you know, how close anybody walks in, wants a parking lot, we're probably going to say no.
I think everyone agrees it's got some merit. We don't have people lined up looking to tear down buildings, thank God, for parking lots right now. That's not our biggest problem.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the feeling with Adam and Mark. Maybe Mark more than Adam. I don't know what Adam was thinking. But I think maybe we do approve it as is, and then with the understanding that it goes back to Plan Commission and looks at the boundaries. I don't know about the parking. I don't care about the parking. I mean, I care about the parking, but for me, that could either stay or go, so. No pressure, Adam.
I do have a problem with the design, so my motion would be to approve it, striking out the parking, sending it back to Plan Commission to extend, to look at extending the boundaries, and to also strike out the exterior design portion of it.
That'd be the totality of Section D design standards.
Correct. Shannon, do you agree with that? You were the second one on.
Yeah, I know. Yes, I agree with that because the design is kind of, I get that we want to have it consistent, but it is kind of limiting, so I will go with Adam on this.
Okay. So we have.
It gets sent back then to the Planning Commission.
Correct.
And they relook at everything, and then they'll, then you'll bring it back to us?
Boundaries, correct.
Yes, and then come back to us.
Okay. I feel better about that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes.
As far as the design standards, wouldn't any new businesses or extensive modifications to businesses go before the Plan Commission for approval?
They are subject to site, excuse me, site and architectural review. This would, I guess I'd say, add to that by giving them some standards to reference as opposed to it being more of an ad hoc review on each one.
Okay, so these standards presented here are purely suggested. They're not.
No, indeed, they're presented as requirements.
Okay, requirements. Let's say recommended.
Yes, sir. Hang on one second, okay? I will ask. I will, I will ask you next.
And you got it saying recommended.
Okay.
Minimum standards for new buildings and building additions. So it's really, yeah, any new buildings and additions.
Oh, that was about the glass.
Yeah.
Glass is different. It says shall consist.
I guess my point would be if somebody wanted a variance, they could approach the Planning Commission and if it's acceptable, get it approved that way, correct?
No, because we would go off the standards that were approved by councils. They would, they would have to meet these standards. They could exceed them, but they would have to meet them.
Doug? Good? Doug? Any other questions? You're good? Darla, any questions, comments?
I have two questions. Great.
Yes. Hang on, Mark. Yeah, go ahead. Whoever, whoever wants to talk on the phone.
Okay, I, my question is, um, for Adam's motion, what did he want to strike out? I didn't catch all of it.
He wants to strike out the parking.
All right, there we go. It would be to strike out the parking provision, the exterior design, and to set the boundaries back to Plan Commission to expand on or relay, so to speak.
Okay. Just so everyone realizes, as far as the, um, the, uh, building design standards, a lot of it is just, uh, suggestion. You know, and primary building materials, I don't think anybody, I don't see what would be the problem with that. But basically, as far as the photos go and all that, those are just examples. We're not going to, nobody speak to the fire on that. Just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, but according to this, though, those aren't really recommended. Those are, you have to do at a minimum. Those are requirements. Okay, Darla?
Are you talking about the decorative cornice?
Yes, the decorative parts, the building design standards.
I thought that was just the suggestion, to be quite honest with you.
It is not. That's why Adam is taking it out, or striking it out from the motion.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Would the last sentence in number three under building design standards cover any alternative, um, designs? On the case-by-case basis?
I think if it were located at the end of this section and, uh, it's the way it is now, I would say it is specific to, uh, the requirements relative to roofs and eaves. If that moved, depends on how creative you want to get tonight, but if that moved to the end and you gave the Plan Commission and perhaps ultimately the City Council on appeal from the Plan Commission, the ability to waive those standards, that, uh, that would give you an out that this language doesn't right now.
Yeah, but even, even doing that, I think we're kind of setting a precedent where people aren't, may not read all the way forward and they're going to read the first part of it and say, oh, this is what I have to do. Even though it may say it at the end, it's going to be, I, I would read it differently, I guess.
Oh, you could, you could put it at the front end, too, I guess, alternatively. I got, I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, it's great that Main Street wants to stand by and, you know, salute the flag that the city raises on this. But we hear a lot of lip service given to having some, I'm sorry, I'm being a little blunt, being given to having some kind of design standards. And, uh, the idea of, uh, the idea of just tossing some minimal standards or maybe, uh, if modified with, uh, with a waiver clause, this might be a, a step in the right direction. But I would agree, you don't want to put some, you don't want to put a developer or property owner in a straitjacket.
Any other discussion? Yeah, Tim.
What is the purpose for 30% at crown level for glass in a residential building? There's so much per square foot per room that you need windows.
Whoever's on the phone, could you mute, please? We're picking up some interference over here. Thank you. Okay.
All I can say is our, our planner told me at the time, these were pulled from some other codes in other cities related to their downtowns. And they're meant, if they're guidelines and they're waivable, that may give it a totally different flavor. Adam, you don't recall other discussion on that point at Plan Commission?
Mm-mm.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Adam, was your motion intended to also include that clarification on outdoor storage?
Yes, it would be, yeah, it would contain that, um, under B, the o, open outdoor storage that was added in our packet, correct?
Shannon, do you concur with that? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't outline that specifically, yes. But yes, that would.
It's on your screen, on your, on the monitors.
Oh, on the monitors?
In red.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Other discussion?
It'd be approving the ordinance as presented with the modifications identified. And I guess I would put separate from that, in, in addition with the referral to the Plan Commission to revisit the boundaries. So it's, it's not embedded in the approval, but there's clear direction that the expectation.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Also the building permit, too. You're saying that you want the Planning Commission to strike all the building permit.
The design.
Design issues.
That's.
Change them to guidelines? Sort of a requirement. At number three as either the, either a precursor or the, like, after, like, the asterisk saying, if you don't, like, you know, our standards, what do you have? The Planning Commission will look at it.
I really don't like doing that, uh, because Plan Commission also is not a, it's not an elected body. That, that's a citizen board made up of citizens, uh, Greg, Matt, and, uh, one member of the council. So I'd rather give them the guidelines to go after and not let them pick and choose that, I guess.
That's fine. Thank you for clarifying.
Mm-hmm.
Could say something to the effect that these design standards may be waived, and I am doing this on the fly clearly, by action of the City Council, following review and recommendation of the Plan Commission. But that, that still means upfront, the person is being told, this is what you're generally expected to meet. But it would put the final decision with this body not im, not embedded in the code as a thou shalt. I'll just throw that out there. That's obviously an option.
Change again?
I don't really.
Okay.
Or somebody could move to amend the motion on the floor.
Someone could move to amend that motion.
I'll move to amend it to modify, yeah, that addition then. Because I don't think we're, I think we're micromanaging this thing. These designs are so general and, and it's, uh, the way it's written. I, I, let's not get into that kind of detail. The important thing is the boundaries to get this thing passed so it protects the city from undue development.
But micromanaging would be.
Yes.
Making them do this.
But micromanaging is thinking the interpretation is too restrictive. That's what I'm saying, Adam.
Yeah, but putting this in there is micromanaging. We're telling them how to do their business. That's micromanaging them.
Giving them a series of alternatives, or not?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Andrew Adams. I just wondered if it might help to point out, uh, sort of the interpretation that we've got a, as attorneys, I mean it.
Yes, please.
Uh, so this is first, so looking at the building design standards, the first point, uh, just so that it's clear, it, it's requiring high-quality, long-lasting materials, and the rest of those are just lists of, you know, what might, what that might be. Um, the actual materials, it's that same standard, but it has to be a high-quality, long-lasting material. And then, then the rest are suggestions of what that might entail. The contrast and eaves, again, uh, these are typical things, and then you've got the, uh, afterwards, alternative design, the materials may be considered on a case-by-case basis. So, uh, that certainly provides some more, uh, work for the Plan Commission, but it does give also that leeway for, um, expansion away from asphalt puddles, uh, or similar. Uh, same with the, the, the flat roofs. There is the requirement for a decorative cornice or parapet, but it is, again, um, very broad as long as it meets some kind of theater for hiding that mechanical equipment on the roof. Um, I, I, I am a little, uh, I, I think the glass, uh, question is certainly open as far as it being 50% glass and 50% primary building material, uh, both of those being required minimums. That's, that's how I would interpret these. They are, they are very broad, uh, a, and I think, you've got this requirement that, that you've got, you know, high-quality, long-lasting materials kind of throughout, uh, but the rest of it is pretty open. So I just want to point it out there that it is, uh, it, it's not restricted to the, the list here. Uh, it's restricted to things like the list, so that's clear.
Thank you.
I mean, we have a very nice downtown right now that survived and is blooming without these, without these design concepts. And quite frankly, our downtown has grown. We filled more storefronts than what we had when I started. And, and I don't know that adding these are going to continue to help that or make it worse. I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to the question, but the one thing I do know is it's grown without these standards. And I think it looks like a very nice downtown, quite honestly, and people have stuck a lot of money in to their buildings and doing it their way. And, and I think that's how we should let them do it personally. Including even the, even the arts. I mean, we have arts on our buildings and I know that that doesn't cover the long-lasting materials, but I don't know. Is that paint a long-lasting material? I, I don't know.
I guess to Adam's point, just to note the two sides to the issue, you can also incentivize, instead of a stick with a carrot, saying, okay, there are facade grants. And I know the Main Street Design Committee, even though I like these standards, I know the Main Street Design Committee at times has said, uh, vinyl siding on that storefront? No. However, we don't want you to go back to 1880 materials. You know, you can use a smart siding that looks like honest-to-goodness clapboard as a.
And I like that. I, I think, I think that's great. If we incentivize, we should, we, we should have more control over it. But if they're doing it on their own, then they should be able to do it on their own.
Mark had a motion on the floor, or wrote, and, and made a motion to amend the motion that stands. I didn't hear a second for that.
Second, Mark's amendment, which was to keep the.
The building requirements, as the attorney said, they're not, they're generic and they're pretty functional, and they're applying to new buildings and additional building additions, non-existing properties, which I agree are doing well.
Have a second for Mark's. Okay, thank you, Doug. Any other discussions? You will take a vote. Roll call vote, please.
This is on the motion to amend.
Can you? Yes.
Oh, I mean.
This would be a vote on the amendment.
You're voting on the as-is, except for, uh, sending the Plan Commission the, uh, the boundaries. So everything as-is.
And taking out the parking.
Taking out the parking. Okay, and taking out the parking. I didn't hear Mark say the parking.
And with the language on outdoor merchandise displayed.
Yeah.
Just the boundaries. Everything else you're voting on.
And whether this passes or fails, there'll then be a separate vote on the main motion, either as amended or not amended. Because it's a separate motion to amend. It wasn't one that was.
Correct.
Agreed upon by the maker and seconder.
Correct.
So this is solely a vote on Mark's motion to amend.
Correct. Are you good? Roll call vote. On Mark's motion.
To amend. We were just amending. Then the motion would come back again.
Do you want to repeat my motion again, so it's clear to everyone?
That's how I heard it, too.
Yes. It's amending Adam's motion, which was his, his motion was to approve it as is except for striking out the parking, striking out the design requirements, and also including the open outdoor storage. Mark is saying yes to all that. Yep, but he, Mark is saying he wants to include the.
The building standards as they're suggested, right.
Correct. So that's what we're voting on, Mark's motion. You okay, Bonnie?
He wants to.
He wants to keep in the design requirements, correct. Okay. We all good? You good, Bonnie?
No, it, yeah.
Yeah?
I, I don't. Go ahead. I'm, I'm not in agreement, but.
Okay, roll call vote.
Douglas Brandt.
Aye.
Yeah, no.
Is that a yes or a no?
No.
No, okay. No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, yeah, no. That, I'm sorry.
So you're still staying with no?
Yeah.
Okay. I say. Yes. I said no. Okay.
Darla LeClaire.
No.
Mark Bittner.
Yes.
Shannon Derby.
No.
Bill LeClair.
Yeah. So now we're back to Adam's original motion, which was, do you want to repeat it again?
To accept it as is, to strike out the parking lot and exterior design, send the boundaries back to Plan Commission, also accepting the revision under B as presented by the City Manager's Office.
Correct. And Shannon, second that already. So any more council discussion on this?
Just to clarify, because that, that reference to referring back to the Plan Commission is kind of in the middle of the motion. If there's an affirmative vote, it's my understanding you're adopting the ordinance as modified, and it will be in effect following publication.
Yep.
And kind of separately, but.
Yep.
But as part of the motion, uh, as follow-up, this is to go back to Plan Commission for boundary review.
Correct.
You see why I was questioning that.
Yep. It was all the order that it was put in.
Yeah.
Okay. No more discussion, I don't think. Roll call vote.
Tim Page.
Aye.
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 Earl, you might be on mute.
Yeah, so I'm trying to unmute myself. Aye.
Mark Bittner. Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill LeClaire.
Aye. Thank you for that. Excellent discussion. Um, we'll move on to number six, input for the public. Uh, if you wish to give your input to the council, please step up to the podium on your left. Um, you can talk about any, or can ask questions or, uh, give input about anything on this council or on this agenda or what you'd like to see on the future agenda. Uh, just make sure you give your name and address for the record. Input from the public.
Ed Knutson, Jr., 2214 Jefferson Street. Um, we got a letter in the mail about, uh, you had a work session about the parking on Jefferson Street. We want to know why nobody in our neighborhood was notified about removing parking on the east side of the street.
Um, I believe we will be talking about that later. I don't know if we want to address that right now.
And did you get the, the, there was not advance notice of the discussion, other than posting for legal requirements, the discussion in Public Works. Did you get the mailing, though, that it was coming in front of council tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
That there, that there was going to be no public input on the matter.
Okay, but you can do it now. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. You got, you got a notice, but you weren't invited to.
We were just, we were just wondering why nobody was notified that it was even going to be brought up for discussion in the work session.
I, no, yeah, no, go ahead. Go for it. I was just going to say, it was talked about in the Public Works meeting that was last week, Wednesday.
Yeah, it was on the third, but usually when they have a work session about something. about something that affects citizens in that area, we would get advanced notice about that it was going to be brought up, that we could attend it to put in our input. So we're just wondering why we weren't even notified about it until after it's going to be on the council agenda.
Because the Public Works Committee approved it, but it's not put into effect until the council approves it. So that's why in the letter it said you could come to the council meeting tonight to voice your opinion on it.
Yeah, because they also said it wasn't going to be open for discussion for some reason in the letter.
It won't be a discussion later in the agenda, but if you want to talk about it now, you certainly can.
And I'm just wondering why they're want to restrict parking again when we went over this a couple of years ago, actually. And the reason that we've been parking in our neighborhood the way we have been is due to people speeding off of Twenty Second Street. There are small children in that neighborhood and we don't want our kids getting hit by speeders. So and they won't do anything about it to get people to slow down. So that's why we basically narrow the road by parking vehicles on both sides.
Yeah, yeah, I know that's something that has been talked about for many years, that section of of Jefferson Street. So, yeah, we did talk about that in the Publix Work Me Public Works meeting. And we decided to, for safety reasons, because they're when it's currently blocked, I know we'll be talking about this later. But the way it is now or at times now, there's no chance of really um public buses getting through.
Buses, uh, the I've been there. My neighbor actually has kids are take the bus. The bus has he has no problem with the bus picking up his kids in front of his house.
Um, and the other reason was for emergency vehicles to get through. That was the other reason why we
My my other issue is, though, they currently have no parking on one side of the street from there to Twenty Second Street. But then no parking zone is never enforced. And I've unfortunately seen our own officers park and had no parking zone on more than one occasion, because I know a lot of times if they have to go to somebody's house on Twenty Second Street, I know there's no parking on Twenty Second Street. I understand they'll come around a corner to park, but that is a no parking zone. So I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Input from the public? That's why I was looking to you two. No offense. Don't mean to call you out or anything, but go ahead, sir.
Andre Robitaille, twenty-three thirteen Jefferson Street. I I think it's too late, but I know it is coming up for public comment. So it's only set a date for public comments. So it's the only way I'm kind of bringing it up now. There were a few things that you're going to look at later for the public comment and and probably honestly, I only bring it up for public comment because the plans are in the actual agenda for tonight. For the things that were in front of the plan commission, the storage building on Rogers Fishing Village, one of the things that got approved, and I think that it was misheard when you when you asked the question during plan commission, only the amount of only right around the building itself was the gravel being replaced on the plans. So the vast majority of that twenty-two thousand foot square foot parking lot is like old dirt hard pack. Anything that's on there potentially is going to run off into the river. So I bring that piece up on multiple buildings, especially the the Roger Street Storage Unit Proposal. They have, and this is a common thing where we talk about light pollution. They have on the plans for both the one of the gas stations and for the Rogers Street building that they're going to use wall pack lighting to light the parking lot, uh specifically to the Rogers Street one. You can't do that by the ordinances. There's two ordinances. So wall pack lighting attached to the wall, if you want to light the parking lot, any plans that are submitted have to use by ordinances full cutoff lighting, which means they're like that and they shine down. They never go out or at least ten percent and so on. So the only way to light a parking lot attached to the building would be to point them up right at the residences across the river. So I only bring that up as something that might have been missed. When we look at it, all lights in the city are supposed to be full cutoff to get the light down and not shining into people's windows. And then the last one is, I'm probably going the opposite on the whole east side parking restriction. I live there, uh, one block north of there. My concern is actually, if there's a speeding issue, it probably isn't currently happening. If we restrict it and open the road, maybe it begins happening again. Right now, it's kind of not. It's hard to get anything wider than a sedan through there right now. It's a pain. I don't have a big car, but it's hard to get it through. So it comes up in neighborhood discussions relatively frequently. And I don't even get out much to have discussions and still I hear about it a lot. So if you go there now, the road's clear. There's almost nothing on it, but that's only been for the last two weeks. So something's changed. If you're going to restrict parking on that spot, all you're going to do, if the concern is, well, we're blocking the road so that people don't speed down it, they're just going to move across the street slightly north by a hundred feet. You you have to do that for the length of that road, which goes up to twenty-fifth. So that's my only point. If you're trying to push the vehicles and clear it up and basically push it onto side streets, then do it. There's very few houses on that set of of on those blocks up to twenty-fifth. So that's my only point. Thank you.
Anything else? Input from the public? Okay, see nothing. Uh, we'll go on to council communications. Letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have something? Yes, Adam.
I got a couple of some of it. We've already talked about the overlay of the downtown district, which we covered already, the C for the tattoo parlor, which is covered already, and people against the no parking on Jefferson. That's it.
Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, um, I was proud to be a citizen of Two Rivers and what a great past weekend we had. I had many people come up to me when I was in the jazz festival at the beach talking about what great it was, how hard or purple people are working, the staff members. And it was really a great day, both the jazz festival and the bands on the beach. So I thank the staff and all the people responsible for organizing that. The second um coming ahead was from a citizen who um has done a lot of research about lighting and um regulations for cities and lighting. And they've done some extensive research and found several other communities north of us. And they copied some of their lighting restrictions and ordinances. I think that's some good ideas. And I'd suggest that, and I'm going to tell this person to come to the planning commission on August twelfth, present your ideas. I'll be there too to listen. But I think that we should reconsider because we don't have a lot of solid ordinances in terms of lighting restrictions and other things. So that's all I have.
Anyone else? I kind of had the same with Adam. I had a couple of people talk about the overlay district, about the light pollution also. I think we all got that email that came through. And also about the tattoo artist and the parking on Jefferson. So, yeah, I same thing, same, probably different citizens, maybe not, but same thing. Then moving on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anyone have anything from past meetings? Go ahead, Bonnie.
I wasn't on this committee, but I I'm always paying attention to um oh, now I I write notes and now I can't find it about water. And there's something about lead and copper. And I do you mind explaining it, Mr. Sukwadi? Because people have to, I always think I I like it when you're aware of it so you're not surprised by it later on. They're they're testing for it.
Or just the testing we did?
Well, the testing, but doesn't that lead to something later if they start finding stuff wrong?
So we do have to perform lead and copper testing for the DNR, which we are doing this year. We did sixty sites the first half of the year, sixty sites in the second half of the year. We did pass on the first half of the year. We did just start sampling beginning of July on the second half. We do have some work to do in terms of changes to that program. Effective at the in October, um, we're going to test not only the first leader that comes out of the sample tap, but also the fifth leader, because we've in our testing have come to realize that when we take the middle of the lead service, sometimes those levels can be higher than the first, which obviously makes sense. If we were to have done fifth leader sampling this year, we would have probably have not passed. With that, we've done some additional service flushing. Um, and we continue to do UDF flushing to help mitigate the biofilm that we get accumulated in the water, which hurts our coating that we put in, the chemical that coats the inside of the pipe so the water doesn't actually hit the lead. So we continue to work on that. We did quite a bit of work towards this to see on the second half of samples if that works. We're hoping it does. And all I can tell you at this point is when we get those sample results back from the second half, we can have this conversation again and hope that the work we've been doing will be enough for that. Is that what you were looking for or?
Yeah, I just I just want people to keep up with that because I don't know whenever they're going to come and save. You have to get rid of all your lead. You have to get rid. They want it when what is it, ten years? They want everything out. And and now they're going after copper. I don't understand that.
Right now, well, there's no regulation on copper other than we test. And our our testing for copper is really, really low. We we don't have an issue um with that in Two Rivers. There are some regulations that are coming out that are in in front of Congress right now. If they get passed, would put a time limit on lead. Right now, there isn't. We've been working very diligently um here, you know, even before my tenure to work on getting lead services out of the ground. If what's in Congress right now passes, it would put us in a timeframe situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Darla? Do you have anything for council communications? I'm sorry, council reports?
Yeah, um, for Main Street, um, I hope everybody had a chance to go down to Brian Lee on Saturday. It did have to end a little bit early mainly because the sound guy wanted to make sure that he packed everything up before rain started. But other than that, it was very successful. Environmental Advisory Board got done with the first video. It's an interview with Brian Delman down at the electric department. So that should be posted, I would say, within the next couple of days. And otherwise, everything is just uh pathetic and on track.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on to number nine, city manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first up, we have some invited guests who've learned a whole lot about facades and downtown design and other things tonight. We thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
I hope you found it as riveting as the council and everybody in the room. Important things. But we welcome uh Mike Stafford, uh senior resident inspector at the Point Beach Nuclear Plant for the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission and the rest of the NRC team, who I expect he'll introduce, to report on the annual assessments of our neighbor to the north, our much loved neighbor to the north, uh the Point Beach Nuclear Plant. So gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening. As Greg stated, I'm Mike Stafford, the senior resident inspector at Point Beach for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I have with me John Massey, who's the resident inspector. So we both live here in Green Bay. We'll talk a little bit about what we do and then go into the assessment for twenty twenty-three performance at Point Beach. Uh, as mentioned, I also have a few members of uh my colleagues here and supervisors. Uh, they're just here uh to mostly observe me and kind of back me up and to see how I address the public and the city.
And thank you for this new approach to community outreach on on reporting on this annual safety assessment. We appreciate it.
All right, uh, so and yeah, thanks again for having us here. If we can go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, the purpose, we're we'll explain a little bit about who the NRC is and what we do. And then we'll get into the performance of Point Beach from twenty twenty-three. Next one. So the NRC, uh, we have a mission. And the that is to license and regulate the civilian use of nuclear power. And we have two main focus areas on that. The first one is safety. And in short, our, you know, our goals are to ensure the adequate protection of public health and safety, the environment and the secure use and management of radioactive materials. So that's kind of hitting both of those bullets there, the safety and security aspects. Go to the next one. And it's kind of a busy table here, but uh we use what we call the reactor process. Really what this is is um it's a a graded approach to safety. We have three main focus areas and those are depicted here in the colors green for reactor safety, orange for radiation safety and blue for safeguards. The we rely on different inputs into this graded approach and those would be performance indicators and inspection findings that uh John or I or an inspector from a different part of the agency would uh would identify. So the performance indicators are objective data used to monitor performance in selected areas. And we use an inspection program to verify the accuracy of these performance indicators. Those are compiled by Point Beach themselves. And the the second one that I mentioned is to conduct our independent inspections. John and I conduct inspections on a daily basis. And then we also have teams of inspectors that come in from regional and our headquarters offices to uh uh check on how Point Beach is operating and making sure that they're following regulations and meeting our requirements. So let's go to the next slide. And so when we identify something, uh, whether it be by a performance indicator or uh inspection finding, we assign it a color to say how significant that issue is. It goes from green to white to yellow to red in increasing significance. So uh for reference, a green performance indicator or finding would signal performances within an accepted performance level, while a red performance indicator signals a significant reduction in safety margin. And that green finding would, we would say, is a very low safety or security significance, while a red finding indicates a high safety or security significance. Next one. Uh, as we identify any issues, if uh or if there's any indicators that change colors from green and up the up the scale, uh, we have what we call our action matrix. So uh this goes from left to right in increasing amount of inspection that we had performed at the site. So uh we we call these different columns. Column one would be the licensee response column and regulatory response would be column two, uh, indicating more response and inspection activities. So we would determine what additional actions, if any, the NRC will take if there are signs of declining performance based on the significance of the performance indicators and inspection findings. And um plant performance moves from left to right, as I mentioned, in the action matrix with increasing se- security and safety significant items. So for example, if all performance indication and indicators and inspection findings are green, then the plant will uh performance would fall within the licensee response column, resulting in routine inspection activities. And then if if there was a plant that had multiple yellow performance indicators and or findings, then that performance would fall within the multiple slash repetitive degraded cornerstone, resulting in increasing oversight such as additional inspection activities focused on performance issues. The implementation of an improvement plan by the uh plant with NRC oversight and increased NRC management involvement as well. Go along with that. And the next one. So as I mentioned, uh, Mike and John is here with me. So we both live in uh Wisconsin and our our job is to go in every day to Point Beach and uh interact with the plant employees and perform inspections and uh make sure that the plant is operating safely. We also have um emergency response uh first responder duties. If if there was an event at Point Beach, we would be the first NRC representatives to go to the site. N R C representatives to go to the site. And that's why we live here in Wisconsin and not in Chicago where our regional office is located. So right now I'm going to turn it over to John to talk a little bit about Point Beach's performance from twenty twenty three.
Hello, as you said, I'm John Massey, the resident inspector for Point Beach. So in our twenty twenty three annual assessment of Point Beach, the plant operated safely. All performance indicators and inspection findings were green during twenty twenty three, so its performance falls within licensee response column. That's that far left column, as you can see here. As a result, we continue to plan doing our routine baseline inspections. It's also important to note that our assessment is on a unit specific basis. So there are two units at Point Beach. But both of them are in this far left column here. Next slide. So overall, in twenty twenty three, we performed nineteen hundred or yes, nineteen hundred and sixteen hours of direct inspection. This includes eleven regional inspections. Which that includes three major team inspections, the comprehensive engineering team inspection, the initial license exam. And biennial emergency preparedness inspection. So just to give an idea of how that looks. You know, these are a combination of different areas that our regional experts will go into and do deep dives into very precise areas. Meanwhile, what Mike and I will routinely perform is just various inspections on their day to day activities. So that gives us a very good broad covering of how we actually go about and perform our inspections as an agency as a whole. Allows us to cover both the breadth and depth of what we need to do to ensure that the plant is operating safely. So like I mentioned, we had a couple. Team inspections with that. So overall, with that, we identified fifteen green findings or violations with this. Again, those are all very low safety significance and therefore plant remains in the licensee response column. Next slide. So as I mentioned before, our plans for twenty twenty four are just to perform the routine baseline inspection. That is what we will do on most years. And again, it would only increase if we do find inputs that are more safety significant. Next slide. So these are our public affair team, public affairs teams members. They do provide a lot of support for us. If you go to the slide after that, that does actually give us can give you contact information for them. And if you have any questions related to the. Operation of Point Beach, they are excellent resources for you to reach out to. So we will be available outside the room here. As you probably saw, we have our poster board set up. So if you have any additional questions, we will be available after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's fair to say this community takes a lot of pride. A lot of the folks involved in the operation, security, all aspects of Point Beach Nuclear, our residents of the community here. Believe the the figure is still about sixteen percent of the electrical energy in Wisconsin produced out at Point Beach. Produced reliably. I'm this isn't a pitch, but it's an important part of our community with no carbon emissions, I might add. We also appreciate the the very important regulatory and oversight role role of the N R C and. Federal employees that have dedicated their careers to developing expertise in these areas and keeping it not only reliable, economically viable, but clearly safe. So thanks for bringing this presentation. Again, thank you for your patience tonight and folks can certainly feel free to. To engage in further discussions in in the hall. So again, pretty positive report overall. Thank you for sharing. Excuse me. Tape and go.
Right there. Says you have.
Yeah. You know what? It's here. Sorry about that, folks. From the beginning. Yes. Okay, for my report tonight, and I'll keep it moving. Again, in the area of staffing updates, police department full time officers, we have been recruiting for one position. Recent developments, we will, the department will be dealing ultimately with the need to recruit for a total of three officer positions in in the P D. And here's an example of the posting that's out currently with an application deadline of this Friday, July nineteenth. Great opportunities with highly professional police organizations serving a great community. Applications. To assure consideration, applications had to be received by last by today, beg pardon. For the community development city planner position, I've started review of those and we've got a lot of planning and zoning issues and economic development issues. So we we want to do our best filling the position with a competent motivated person. Be assured that's a priority on my part, get that person on board. You don't you don't get to see their faces tonight, but we do welcome again Attorney Sean Griffin shown here on the left. Guys, the pictures look really good. They're from your website. And Andrew Adams from Weston Dunn. Both of these gentlemen have significant concentration in municipal practice. And they have been assigned to provide general counsel to the city following the retirement of our long longtime city attorney. Jack Bruce back on June thirty of this year. I would note that Sean is an undergraduate. Has his undergraduate degree from Drake University and is a U W Law School graduate, also has some background. In municipal planning, which is quite interesting. And Andrew also joining us from Weston Dunn, Carlton College undergraduate, University of Wisconsin, Madison Law School, twenty eighteen graduate. Both of these gentlemen, I think I think both of them are planning to be at our work session on July twenty nine. So they'll be here during the day to get some introduction to staff and familiarize them with some of the major ongoing projects and activities. We have in the community and part of the agenda for the evening on the twenty ninth will be to to meet city council, get acquainted. So we welcome both Sean and Andrew and and look forward to their input at future council meetings as well.
One thing, Greg, are we saying that it takes two people to fill Jack's position?
I I think that's I I wouldn't dissuade you from that.
I'm just making sure. That's what it looks like. So that's good.
That's right. It's the same retainer, though. I'll be quick to add that.
Big shoes to fill.
Yep, and we'll and we'll get used to the long distance representation. And we're we're already actively engaging with both of these gentlemen. As well as as well as the folks at their local Weston Dunn office. We it'd be great to have a municipal attorney residing in the Lake Shore area, so I'll just put in a plug if either of you want want a beautiful community with still very affordable housing, great quality of life. We'll we'll give you the pitch when you're here on the twenty ninth. Okay, update on the Roosevelt Street construction project. If you have any questions, I'd refer them over to our city engineer, Mr. Heckin Label. They've the contractor has completed sanitary sewer main installation from twelfth to Lowell. That's the full length of the project, right, man? Yeah, they're still working on water main from ninth to Lowell, sort of at the southerly end of the project. And sanitary and water services are happening south and west of Ninth Street. The most shallow of the underground infrastructure is stormwater and that's continuing as weather allows. But I'd say fair to say we're on schedule with that project as far as looking at a fall completion. Would like to thank the local four twenty three International Association of Firefighters or our firefighters union. At T R F D for their donation and work in cooperation with the fire department and with Parks and Rec. With installation of new life rings at Nishota Beach pictured here. Twenty four inch rings with a hundred feet of floating rope attached. Chief, did you have any? Yes, here is any additional comments on this one or are we good? One one did go missing and whatever scarily scoundrel out there, that's the best I can use on air. If you'd care to return it or submit a a check via mail to the fire department or the I A F F. That would be appreciated because these are at the beach for a very good public safety purpose. These new life rings combined with the the electronic warning system tied to beach condition reports from the National Weather Service. That, of course, funded through Room Tax by our Room Tax Commission, considerable investment in the safety of everybody that uses our beach. But we want those life rings there when people need them, not hanging as a decoration in somebody's dorm room or garage or wherever the heck that one ended up. So. Thank you, I A F Local Four Twenty Three. And that's a unit president Travis Gunderson there in the photo with the chief. Would would echo Mark's earlier comments. Kudos to Two Rivers Main Street and all of the sponsors that made the Brian Lee Memorial Jazz Festival Blues Festival. I did it too, Mark. Blues Festival a reality this weekend. It was enjoyed by a great crowd. Lots more live music in in Two Rivers this coming Thursday, July eighteen. The Two Rivers Community Band plays Sinatra in Central Park. It'll be beautiful out, but in case of inclement weather, you move inside the J E Hamilton Community House. Downtown Friday Night Live continues Friday night with Glow and Joe. At seven P M, seven to nine over in Central Park West, again with the community house. As a backup location, you don't need to wander far out of town on a Friday night for great live music because it's available right here in downtown Two Rivers. We also salute the Kiwanis Club. Coming up is the forty fifth annual Kiwanis Fish Derby out on the waters of Lake Michigan and the festival at Walsh Field. That's the weekend of July twenty to twenty one, next weekend on the lake and at Walsh Field. Fishing has been great out of Two Rivers this year, so we expect. That to be reflected in the outcome of the of the tournament. Live music, including Smoke Road, Dr. Bombay, barbecue from Brian's Smokehouse and brats and burgers from painting pathways in support of their great work in the community. And we trust there will be no boats aflame as part of the derby like we had this past weekend. Concerts in the park, one of the really beautiful concerts of the summer, my goodness, coming up this Sunday already. The Lake Shore Wind Ensemble returns to the Schmidt Brothers stage in Central Park for their annual concert. And that one is always a treat, especially when they do the Stars and Stripes Forever as their grand finale. That's recommended highly. This coming Sunday, six to eight P M, Central Park West. The Manitowoc Marine Band visits next week, Thursday, July twenty fifth, also on the Schmidt Brothers stage, Central Park West. We do an exchange. The Two Rivers Community Band goes to Manitowoc. The Marine Band comes here each summer for a visit. Last we forget, a couple of weeks out is Snow Fest, July twenty sixth to twenty eighth, with most of the activities concentrated over at Nishota Park. The Snow Fest Parade on Columbus Street is on Saturday, July twenty seven, stepping off at eleven A M. I know I we have a number of. Council members walking or riding in the parade at eleven o'clock on Saturday morning. I will be in the reviewing stand as one of the judges. I declined the dunk tank, but figured I could sit in judgment of people passing by. So. Looking forward to Snow Fest, bringing a lot of great memories and helping create new memories here in Two Rivers. An amazing event showing the generosity of this community, the Two Rivers Optimist Club. For I don't know how many years now has done the great bike giveaway, donated bicycles. Bring your bring your young children, kids two to twelve are eligible to win. Names are entered into a raffle and an awful lot of smiling faces leave that event headed home. Thank you to the Two Rivers Optimist. Club, Optimist Organization and to all of the donors that make this great outpouring of generosity and joy possible. War on the Shore Fast Pitch Tournament, maybe some changes in the scope of that tournament. I don't know if Adam cares to share that. I I had not noted this. This was 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 in there, but that is coming up. Not July one to four, August, one to four, coming up. And that with the exception of a reminder of the back to school carnival. Accepting donations to make sure that all of our local kids return to school with the requisite supplies. Being handled by the Two Rivers Senior Center, and this is the second annual for this event. And then we just close noting the outstanding response by the Coast Guard who just happened to have personnel and a boat in the harbor last Saturday morning. They they aren't staffing our station. We sure wish that was the case in in the summers like they have in past years, but. As the chief reported to me, serendipitous, they were headed into the harbor. Our Two Rivers Fire Department responded as well to the major charter boat fire that happened on Saturday morning and happily. Although there was certainly a loss of property, as you see there, nobody was injured in the course of that that fire and the subsequent. Sinking of that boat in the harbor. So that's my report. Chief, yes, speak to that, please.
Something that's important to note regarding that incident, there's no PFAS in the water. Just wanted to spell that. That is not a fact. The foam that we carry does not have PFAS in it.
Very good point.
There's a lot of hydrocarbons in the water. There was around four hundred dollars in fuel on that boat. So.
And at least through the weekend, there were still booms in place.
What's that?
Were there still booms in place though through the weekend for containment?
Efforts to mitigate any of the spread of the contaminants from the boat. We were working with the D N R, the hazmat team from Appleton. And other collaborating agencies. I'd like to thank the law enforcement for helping us out there to make sure the scene was clear of people. There was a lot of people down there and I'm sure that anyone was in the community at that time saw the smoke.
During that incident.
And I saw a very good response. I happened to be downtown at the time, so it was a very good response by our our fire department, our police department, all teamed up very well. To make sure that that fire got put out and everyone was safe. So hats off to you guys and your crews. So I saw you guys all down there, so.
Absolutely. And the Coast Guard ship that was there, just so everyone's aware, they were dropping something off at the Coast Guard Station at Two Rivers. And the incident happened literally fifty feet away from them. So they were able to put a grappling hook on it, pull it to the shore so we could put the fire out. For those questioning why there were so many fire trucks there, we had to position fire trucks across the river. And at various spots in case the boat was floating, so we could hit it from various sides. That's why there were so many fire trucks there.
Chief Miner just mentioned the plans are for the the boat to be raised and removed as soon as tomorrow. So salvage operations planned very shortly. Thank you. That that concludes my report.
Thank you all for that. Onto number ten, consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes from the city council meeting from July first, twenty twenty four. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under minutes of meetings, there are five. There's Advisory Rec Board from June twelfth, Environmental Advisory Board, June eighteenth. Public Utilities, July first, Public Works, July third, and Plan Commission, July eighth. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have department reports for June twenty twenty four. We have city clerk, electric, fire inspections, library, public, I'm sorry, parks and recreation, public works, safety and water. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under D, we have applications and petition petitions. We have a one for a temporary Class B retailer's license from Roger Street Fishing Village for Roger Street Days Annual Fundraiser, August ninth and tenth, twenty twenty four. At Roger Street Fishing Village. We have another one for a temporary Class B retailer's license from Two Rivers Historical Society for the Accidental Hero Live Performance, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. At sixteen twenty two Jefferson Street. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the application and authorize assurance of the license. Under E, we have a noise ordinance waiver for Snow Fest twenty twenty four on July twenty sixth to the twenty eighth. Until twelve A M at Nishoto Park, waive the provisions of section nine dash two dash five B two B. Regarding noise audible within an enclosed structure used for residential purposes and section nine dash two dash five D pertaining to vibration and. Snow Fest Parade Rose Closure of Columbus Street between Memorial Drive, State Highway forty two and Highway three ten for Saturday, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Between the times of eight A M and one P M. The recommendation will action will be a motion to approve the request as submitted. We also have a noise ordinance waiver for Roger Street Days on August ninth and tenth, twenty twenty four until eleven thirty P M. At twenty one oh two Jackson Street, waive the provisions of section nine dash two dash five B two B regarding noise. regarding noise audible within enclosed structure used for residential purposes and section nine dash two dash five D pertaining to vibration. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the noise ordinance waiver. Under G, we have summary of verified bills for the month of June twenty twenty-four for two million seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Uh, under H, we have financial reports for May twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have one for debt service, general fund and utilities report. Recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under I, we have a recommendation from Plan Commission Meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty-four to set a public hearing regarding conditional use permit as you museum, storage building used for Roger Street Fishing Village located at twenty twenty, twenty-ten Roger Street, submitted by Ace Building Service, the applicant and Bonnie Tim on behalf of owner Roger Street Fishing Village. The recommended action will be a motion to set public hearing on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M. Uh, number two, we have a set public hearing regarding conditional use permit for a gas station located, located at seventeen oh six Sixteenth Street in the B one Business District, submitted by Quashas Construction Incorporated, which is the applicant and Halapa Marketing LLC, the owner. The recommended action will be a motion to set public hearing on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M. On number three, we have the set public hearing regarding conditional use permit for a gas station proposed for twenty-two-hundred Forest Avenue. Uh, details from the July P C agenda, recommended for denial by the Plan Commission. The recommended action will be a motion to set public hearing on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M. Uh, special note for that, if the applicant decides to withdraw their C U P application, we will report that at the meeting and ask council to remove from consent agenda. The recommended action for consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended.
And with regard to that item, I three, I would just note, I, I reached out to Quashas with an email last week asking if, if there was the intent to uh either uh withdraw the application for purposes of not proceeding or for purposes of perhaps revisiting the design with the Plan Commission to, to so advise. I have not heard, so um accordingly, the council's action would include setting that hearing for the nineteenth.
Gotcha. Perfect. Uh, so looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Bill. Second by Tim. Any discussion? Yes, Adam.
Uh, when it comes to the Snow Fest Parade Road Closure, that is just for through traffic until the parade starts, correct? So people that work in that industrial park can still get to and from their jobs. Is that correct?
I believe. Miner to.
Okay.
Yeah. Of course, the eighteenth street remains open, doesn't it? It's which.
Right. I just didn't know if, if format happened to work on a weekend, W P S, so on and so forth.
There are businesses whose sole access is.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is voice vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Uh, onto city council formal items. Under A, we have proclamation for National Night Out on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the recommended action, motion to read and adopt the proclamation.
I guess that's me. Uh, National Night Out Proclamation, whereas Two Rivers Police Department, along with Cool City Crime Prevention sponsor National Night Out, a community, a community building campaign on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out Campaign is in its seventeenth year in Two Rivers and provides an opportunity for neighbors in our city to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across eighteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U S territories and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhood safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas first responding agencies in our county assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out twenty twenty-four. And whereas we provide an event that all neighbors in our city come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore, we do hereby call upon all neighbors of Two Rivers to join our event on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four from six o'clock to eight o'clock P M. At Walsh Field, Two Rivers. Further, let it be resolved that we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four as National Night Out in Two Rivers, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Chief. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Adam. Looking for a second? Thank, thank you, Shannon. Uh, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Bonnie, Kim Malunas.
Aye.
Scott Stikmus.
Aye.
Adam Mohaski.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bidner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, on to B, consider proposed parking restrictions. No parking along the east side of the twenty-two-hundred block of Jefferson Street. The recommended action is a motion to eliminate parking on the east side of Jefferson Street from twenty-second Street to twenty-third Street as recommended by the Publix, Public Works Committee. Go ahead, Matt.
I guess I'll take this one. Um. The discussion that occurred on July third at the Public Works uh meeting was a formally noticed uh meeting. Um, and it was brought to our attention through various communications that uh, the ongoing issue had basically reared its ugly head yet again. And um, it was brought forward to the committee to take a look at various options uh and considerations. Um, and ultimately the option that was selected was to do something or make it a recommendation immediately. Um, to bring something forward to address the issue that has been out there since about twenty sixteen. Um, it, it's been discussed numerous times at committee levels providing residency opportunity to make comment at those past um meetings or special meetings. And again, the uh Public Works Committee opted uh to forego any public input on this case. Propose immediate action of no parking on the east side. Um, recognizing that uh additional action may be required in the future as far as side streets or ultimately looking at a uh no parking zone all the way up to twenty-fifth Street. But uh, the committee wanted to ultimately take immediate action on this. Um, I did receive one email over the weekend uh coming from the letter that I had put out uh last week uh in recognition of this meeting that if residents wanted to make comment, uh, they could. Um, just that at this portion of the meeting, they would not have their public input uh taken into consideration uh that they could do so in the public input portion. Um. The resident uh in particular had made note that uh their preferred option would be to eliminate parking on both sides of the street um in that twenty-two-hundred block, so twenty-second to twenty-third. Uh, they have noted that uh because of the large vehicles and trailers out there that kids have been uh encountered crossing mid-block, uh darting out from behind these vehicles and ultimately making it a very unsafe condition as well. So thus their reason with, they wanted to have no parking for the entire twenty-two-hundred block. So that provides a, a general background of uh what occurred last week at our Public Works meeting. And uh, the memo that I prepared um on the ninth goes into a little more depth of what uh historic uh discussions have occurred.
Any questions for Matt before we look for a motion and we have council discussion?
I thought that RVs were not supposed to park in the street in general. So why would they be parking there on that street?
A trailer, which would be an RV, uh can be parked by daytime purposes. Um. As long as it's confined, confined meeting other requirements, i.e. not uh blocking driveways or too close to hydrants or crosswalks, et cetera. But at night, they need to be uh hooked up to a move, a vehicle, and they must be moved uh after every forty-eight hours, I believe it is.
The other thing is the police suggested that you have no parking on the east side from twenty-two to twenty-five. Why didn't you do that? Basically, all you did was add an extra car to not park there. Because if no parking was there, except for that one house where this woman had trouble getting around, basically, all you did was add an extra car length to the no parking zone.
The alternative of a no parking zone from twenty-second all the way up to twenty-fifth was discussed. Um, but the committee opted to take the short term, um, or address the immediate concern. And if uh the problem persists and uh promulgates elsewhere, then further um, action would be required. So this is a.
Well, who's gonna monitor that?
It, it'll be basically again by complaint-driven, um, staff, uh, public work staff, P D, um, U S council members. So if we continue to see uh an ongoing issue, well, then we have to have further discussions. But the committee again wanted to take that immediate action in the known area. If there, no problem persists in the future, we're done. If a problem appears to continue on, uh, then it was kind of decided or discussed that we would have additional public input. And then uh, listen to the residents in that whole entire area, not just on Jefferson and get their public input on how to best address the parking concerns in that area.
Bonnie, good. Any other questions? Otherwise, we look for a motion. Doug first, second by Bill. Council discussion. Yes, Adam.
I'm not in a big favor of this. I did hear from a resident um over the weekend and then we heard from one um tonight. I'm just not a big person of taking away parking for the most part, um, especially in neighborhoods where there are kids and so on and so forth. I mean, you got parties and other things that are gonna happen at these places. And, and just taking away parking just seems, seems a bit much. And, and again, from the only person that I heard from and then tonight, uh, both of those people were, were not for it.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Tim.
Um, I'm gonna abstain from the vote because my house is a corner house right where they want to do that and I myself would be against it because I have a two-family home and that the other side of the street where they're making it no parking, but I have a hard time. I, my tenant couldn't park there anyways because it's full, which I think is.
Anything else?
I agree that that street is very difficult to get through. I have to pass through it sometimes to get to my house, but I'm not sure if this is the right answer, but something needs to be done because it is treacherous to get through there even with a Ford Escape. I don't drive a huge vehicle like a, you know, like a big truck or anything, but it is treacherous. Dicey, just navigating through there.
Yes, Mark.
I drove by the street today and it seems like there's one house that doesn't even have a driveway to park off-street. Is that true? No?
I can tell you there is two houses on that side of the street.
Our, our leniency, if you will, toward trailers parking on the street is contributing to this problem in that block. I, I mean, just from casual observation, there's at least one priority-wide trailer there, and I don't know. I don't know how you correct for that, but that, that's part of the issue. As I've observed.
Any other discussion? Yes, Adam.
Is it possible to eliminate trailer parking on there or is that open up a whole nother can of worms? Um, again, I just, I speak from this, I understand what the residents are going through because I hear a lot of it throughout the city when it comes to winter parking ban and people have issues trying to get all their cars in the street. I don't know how eliminating parking on the, on a whole side of a street is really gonna work for those neighbors.
To uh, address your point of uh eliminating trailer parking, that was discussed as a potential option. However, we would potentially have to make a ordinance revision um to exclude certain areas from a uh, a no trailer parking zone. And then what constitutes a trailer? Is it the small utility to oversized trailers? So you'd have to start becoming very specific. So again, the committee did discuss that, the various options, uh, but wanted to take that immediate option of addressing the uh narrowness and safety concern of vehicles getting through there uh on a more consistent basis.
Uh, it's a safety issue and definitely this is the easiest way to react to the issue. Uh, the school bus tries to get through there and sometimes there's trailers parked on both sides of the road. Now, these are commercial trailers and they're big. Why? And uh, sometimes the bus has to back, turn around and uh go away. They can't, there's a handicapped kid they have to pick up on the corner. So this, this, this is why we, we've reacted this way. It's the easiest thing to do for right now. We're discussing uh other ways to do it and uh Matt said we have to change ordinance. Uh, that's gonna take a little longer, so right now we want to get, get ahead of this thing and uh uh, stop the problem.
I'm, I live right there and there weren't, none of the trailers that were out, there were actual commercial trailers, but they could you just talk to the owner and ask them to?
They've been talking to the owner for, owners for eight years.
Ken's got something to say.
Yes, I can just give a little bit of a police department uh perspective. Um, our C S O is dealing with those properties quite frequently. I had even urged her to announce that to the property owners, that it's getting to the point where it's going to um, go to committees to have changes. And up until like you had just recently heard, up until about two weeks ago was the first that it kind of alleviated because I think this clearly was coming forth. Um, but the entire time that I've been in Two Rivers, we've dealt with issues in that area. Um, changes have been made to have no parking for half of it because we had issues coming off of twenty-second Street to be able to even enter that roadway. Um, that was one of the reasons for that change. We also deal with, um, like was mentioned, trailer issues. Um, and you're right, maybe we can correct some of those ordinances, but people always play those ordinances to their favor. So what we typically deal with on a third shift is you will have um trailers basically left in that same area for an extended period of time. At night, a truck will just back up to it and lower it down onto the hitch so it's technically legal. And then they raise it back up and leave for the morning. So that trailer never leaves. That's not just there, that's anywhere in the city. Uh, so we typically deal with that. We have officers investigating. Uh, we also have um the movement of a vehicle in a forty-eight hour period. That means it just has to move even a couple inches and it's good to go legally. So um, you know, we chalk tires, we've done things like that and people play the games. we chalk tires, we've done things like that, and people play the games. They either wipe off the marks, or they move it a whole foot, and then they're legal. So those are just some of the experiences we've dealt with. I will say to answer Bonnie's question, it wasn't like a for sure. That was my opinion on having no parking from twenty-second to twenty-fifth. In fact, what I did do is I offered up a bunch of suggestions because I would caution that in any situation, there are consequences. I would agree with a lot of what you heard today. I said, yes, you could, you could close off parking on the east side for that distance, because we also have concerns about Airbnbs that have come up. We've also had concerns about river frontage and kind of that beautiful view that's over in the twenty-five-hundred block. But then what it's going to do is it's going to push everything to the side streets of twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, because there are RVs that are parked in those locations too, so now you'll just add to it. There's been other issues that I brought up. You know, you could do a, like, small car, or like was mentioned, you can only usually get a sedan, or if you had sedans, and no trucks or trailers, or just no trailer parking, those are options too. I think what the committee chose to do, though, is take all that input and go with the least intrusive method at this point. So I applaud them for that because it's probably the least intrusive, will have the least consequences, at least to start off, but there may need to be something further.
The thing is, what's bothering me is, now help me understand this, from twenty-two to twenty-three, there is no parking there already. Is that correct, except for one?
For half a block.
For half a block.
Yep, so that was, that was intended to allow people to get from twenty-second turning on to the.
But the thing is, if that's not working, how is it gonna work to add that extra space of no parking?
Well, it is working for that purpose. So that purpose was literally just to get people from twenty-second on to Jefferson there, because before that, they were getting blocked, so they couldn't even make that turn. So it was unsafe because of all the speeding traffic that you have on twenty-second, the heavy traffic. So it did work for that purpose. The purpose that we're talking about now is a parking issue that's completely unrelated.
Okay, so then I'm not catching on what this is for.
So.
Come around the corner, and there would be two trailers parked, or two large trucks, and they can't go anywhere.
So now, basically, you can get from there north on Jefferson Street, but you can't get further because now you're blocked is what the complaint is, or nearly blocked. So you can get safely off twenty-second, which was achieved through that portion of no parking. But again, that also had a consequence because I think now you're dealing with more cluttered-up parking in that area. But now, you're bottlenecked right there. So you get off at twenty-second, and now you're bottlenecked, and you can't get through. That's the complaint.
I guess I would be in favor of no trailers, which would consist of anything being attached to your car via hitched, to be parked on the roads at any time, drive-through only. I just feel for the neighborhood who try to, to try to use the streets to park, whether they're having a party or whether they have cars or extra neighbors or whatever it may be. I mean, people always park on the road every street you go. And I also think this is gonna create a problem on the other side roads as people start to park on there. You already have the neighbors that park on their side roads, going up, what is that, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, probably twenty-fifth in my head? I think that's twenty-fifth. That already park on those roads, and now you're gonna take this traffic that can no longer park on the road, and they're just gonna start bottlenecking those neighborhoods. And it may not be as intrusive, maybe, to traffic, but it's gonna be intrusive to the neighborhood, and they're not gonna be real happy with it.
Yeah, and that's one thing we did talk about in the Public Works Committee meeting. But I think, what, I think, but what we had talked about during that meeting is school will be starting again in September. We wouldn't have time to come up with ordinance changes. We talked about the no-trailer thing. That was something we talked about quite extensively, and even no parking all the way up. We wanted to do something so when school starts, buses would be able to get through. But the intention is to still try to figure out what to do with that section of the streets. Because, yeah, it is a bad section. It's not fair to take away parking from people on that side of the street.
Are you gonna, why don't you start something then to get the neighborhood talking about the whole?
That's what we want to do then. We were looking at doing this. Yeah, I think, I don't know if Bill mentioned, or Matt might have mentioned it. No worries. That is one thing we talked about too, and that's one thing we want to do too, is if it does still become problems.
No, no, not if it becomes a problem. I mean, start doing it right now.
We could. That's something we could.
Because I know what that's like to live in where there's no parking that's being taken away. My neighbor across the street can never have anybody park along their house, ever. And it's, you know, it's just kind of, I mean, I don't know how much they care, but I'm just saying that it's, I know what that's like.
The trailer thing, I would say probably has some merit. We, and it's not gaming it. It's kind of like people that talk about tax loopholes. No, somebody put them there with an intent. And the city was trying to be accommodating. You take your camper out of storage, and you're headed out early the next morning. Geez, you know, if you park it attached to your vehicle out front. But the fact is, if you, I won't even say game it, but you use it, I just did, to your full advantage, you can park a boat, like the chief said, you can park a boat or a trailer-type camper or a utility trailer on the street all summer long. And it happens. And frankly, in neighborhoods where folks don't care, and there's plenty of off-street parking, maybe that's not a bad thing. Maybe you do selectively restrict, because there are also, face it, people make choices. There are a lot of people parking on the street because their garage is full of crap, and maybe their driveway is too. And there are some personal choices that put all those vehicles out on the street. It isn't all sweetness and light. And, you know, just like you can't stop your neighbor from parking in front of your house if it's open in front of their own house, it's kind of living together in a community. I certainly support this Band-Aid solution, but looking at the trailer issue could be part of it. Maybe if you live in a really tightly-packed neighborhood with a lot of demand for on-street parking, boy, that's one area where adding trailers to the mix just doesn't work.
Tim?
Would it be feasible to have, like, a no-trailer for that block instead of trying to change the ordinance and having everybody in the whole city suffer?
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, but an ordinance would be for everybody.
We can't just make a rule up. We need to go through the, check the ordinances. I don't know, chief?
I believe what we had discussed regarding the trailer parking, right now, you can park basically a trailer anywhere within the city. So to exclude it in one particular area, we believe would have to modify the ordinance to define type of trailer, and then ultimately where we would be able to restrict, basically, a zone, a specific street or whatnot. So we wanted to talk to legal counsel and find out what we can and cannot do. And so, again, the Band-Aid approach or the immediate approach was taken by the committee.
Yeah, because we do similar stuff to that with bikes, where they're not allowed on the sidewalk except on certain roadways, and except on bridges. So we have, we have experience with that in the past, because they're allowed on Riverview Drive, they're allowed on bridges. I found one other small section of the street.
What time parking, um, but time parking for a trailer, like, you could pull up at her house to pack her stuff up, but you can't have it there for a couple of weeks or something because there's an incident, it's a tight zone or something.
Again, the existing ordinance does not have any provision for exceptions.
Two attorneys on the line here. I think you're still there. Is there anything we can do legally to shortcut this and make it trailer on that street only and not go through all the other houses and get it done that way? Ernie, are you there?
Yep, I didn't quite catch the last part of that.
Can we make an exception legally without modifying everything in our ordinances? You see the legal answer? To eliminate trailers on that street only?
You can certainly pinpoint the type of vehicle that you want to allow or not allow. I think it's going to be a little bit difficult coming up with a definition to fit that, and there's gonna be ways around it. But it's something that we can certainly look into. I think I'd like to take a little bit of time to come up with something like that.
Yeah, I think we need more time to give you an answer because it's gonna be, we need to figure how we write the definition so it encompasses exactly what you're looking at and doesn't erroneously encompass the wrong type of equipment or other things. I think that would be our primary concern.
So then if we found a way around it, that might be a solution, Adam, to eliminate trailers.
But again, as the attorneys just stated, they would have to have a definition and a method. But again, that's what the committee had looked at or considered, and because of the time constraint, the committee opted to go with something immediate.
In order to be in place before back to school. But how long is it gonna take the attorneys to come up with a solution? I mean, we have to restructure all our ordinance. That takes a lot longer.
Could this be like a short-term solution until we get the other, or?
Can we, can we be very clear about this? It's not just trailer parking. It's two trailers parking directly across from each other, so that the travel path is so narrow, a fire truck, a school bus cannot get through. That's, that's the crux of the problem, is that two trailers parking directly across from each other. And if that can be eliminated?
Yeah, I agree with you, but I would just, I don't know if, no parking was a short term until we got that figured out, but at least that way, we'd have it safe for during, when school goes back into session.
It's unfortunate that we are at this place. If people would park with courtesy for their neighbors, maybe we wouldn't be here. I don't know.
Anything else?
I was just gonna say that there's two driveways in that half-block, so there's, I think there's parking for maybe four cars, tops, three, that they're gonna lose. So that's another reason why we picked this less intrusive way of going about it.
Anything else? Otherwise, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Scott Stickmuster.
Aye.
No.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Patriot.
No.
Thank you all for that. Good discussion.
Does council wish to provide any direction back to the Public Works Committee or staff to take a look at something on trailer parking?
As.
Don't want to go off after that if you don't, but if you do, we. Okay, that'll be happening at your.
Who chairs that board? Bill? Bill, can you take it back there and look to eliminate trailers or anything that attaches to a hitch, period? No parking for those on-street at all. Right, and then allow for parking.
And just like you talked about the bicycles, we could make it, you know.
Yeah, there was a lot of good information. I wish we were all at the Public Works Committee meeting.
And Scott, I'd like to add, to attorneys on the line, maybe you can give us some legal insight too, to make it easier so that Bill can achieve that?
That part of the code's about three paragraphs, so I dare say it'll be a fairly quick study, but it needs to be attended to.
Okay, on to C, award a bid for Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision Phase Three infrastructure. The recommended action will be a motion to award the bid to advance construction of Green Bay, Wisconsin, based on its low bid. Note, staff still evaluating whether to recommend award a base bid or base bid plus an alternative bid for an expanded project scope. Recommendation to be presented at Monday night's meeting, project budgeted at $1 million in City 2024 capital budget.
Matt will do the detailed presentation. I guess I'd just serve it up by saying, a good number of years ago, oh, twenty-eight maybe, the city first embarked on being the developer for a single-family residential subdivision at what is now the Sandy Bay subdivision. It got off to a slow start. It has been seeing a significant amount of construction activity within the last three to four years. I think we're down to two available lots, one of which is under contract, and one of which a local contractor is reviewing some of the wetland restrictions, working with a client. So we're about tapped out there. Last year, there were twenty-one completed homes on the tax rolls there with an average assessment of about $240,000, and paying an average tax bill just to the city of about two, I'm sorry, $2,745, round numbers, about $2,750 per house. Got a good thing going there as far as single-family residential development, which is one of several types of housing the community needs. There's a million dollars in this year's budget for what we termed Phase Three. As Matt will describe to you, we put out for bids for a base bid that essentially is that Phase Three area, eleven lots total, but also an add alternate that takes it further to twenty-six total lots. The way the bids came in, that results in more favorable cost per lot. That would mean committing additional dollars into next year's budget to cover a $1.7 million cost versus most of a million for Phase One. So there's a lot of moving parts here. Wanted to present it to council tonight. You may act tonight. I think we're still within the contract specifications if we, if it ends up being tabled to the work session in two weeks. But this is important. I expect most of you, if it's at all possible, want to see development activity continue in this subdivision. So with that in mind, we've been waiting quite a while to get the necessary DNR approvals for wetlands and all of our permits. We're there. Now we have the bids in front of us. Over to you, Matt.
Greg said most of it.
That's just, that's just the history.
That's just the history. Yes, we took bids last week and have tabulated both the, well, looked at all the bid tabs or the bids that were submitted. We actually had seven. The bid tabs were actually part of the council agenda. And as Greg had noted, we did have a base bid. So on the memo that I just handed you, the very last page is a map of what the base bid was, and it's basically the first portion of Orchard Lane and the cul-de-sac to the west off of Orchard Lane, which would be Raleigh Court. That would be eleven lots, and that portion of the bid for underground utilities, a sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, sanitary water, storm laterals or services, road grading and gravelling, and the excavation required for the stormwater management features, came in for a low qualified bid of $463,895.50. We also looked at a alternate add item, which is the portion, remaining portion of Orchard Lane and about 500 to 600 feet of Sandy Ridge Drive off of Orchard Lane. That would include an additional fifteen lots at a, an additional cost of $481,834.50, for a total of doing the base and the alternate bid of $945,730.00. The engineering estimate all in was $1,124,000. And ultimately, as Greg had mentioned, during the preparation of the budget, we had set aside a million dollars to do basically what was the base bid. And then, as we were putting a bid package together, we looked at various. we looked at various combinations of how can we potentially expand the construction limits, gain additional lots and so on and so forth. And so that's how the add alternate process came into being. There are additional costs that would be incurred to make these lots ultimately buildable, such as the curb and gutter first lift of asphalt, the finalization of the stormwater management features, i.e. vegetating them, and then the installation of electric gas and telecom utilities, along with the engineering and contingencies. So the table that was included in the memo will ultimately kind of guide you through the bid costs. So the yellow column is just that base bid. Again, advanced constructions, low bid of $463,895.50. The future additional costs, some which are engineers' estimates and some are guestimates. The electric and gas for just the base bid are, for electric and gas are estimates or guestimates. And then we ultimately expanded that out to what the total future work and total construction cost would be for that phase. Alternate two, or the green column, is the base bid plus the alternate add item. And the same process goes into effect. However, in electric, we had a firm quotation from our electric utility. So we were able to make it an affirmed numeric entry in there. And then ultimately, what would it take to do the whole entire development? And then ultimately, on the bottom, the total number of lots and what that cost per lot would be. Now, it shows that there's only 32 potential lots. That's not 100% factual. The lot 17, the far northwesterly lot, has been left as an oversized lot so that we can look at options on how to best utilize that piece of property with some creative development, possibly as a PUD condominium type scenario, or we just divide it up into individual residential lots. So we're leaving some flexibility, but because it is a large lot, it was only counted as one lot. So.
Think the concept of my cows development at the preserve at Lincoln Park off Reed Avenue, for example, that could be a way of putting multiple homes on that, whatever lot number that was at the northwest corner.
Lot 17.
Yeah.
Well, for basis of discussion, I did make a formal recommendation that we go with the alternative two, the base bid plus the alternate add item for an award for advanced construction of $945,730. And future costs, infrastructure costs of $561,110.86.
Questions from?
I guess at this point, really, we're looking at some preliminary feedback. This has been a long meeting already. I don't want to try to force a decision here. But frankly, we've got good bids, we've got good pricing. We need to move forward with a sense of, will the market absorb much higher cost lots than what we've had? And to what extent might the council see it as in the public interest to underwrite some of the costs of those lots, bearing in mind that each, on average, each of the new homes we've seen up there in four years is producing about $11,000 in tax revenue per parcel for the city. By the way, I mentioned 21 houses built and on the tax rolls in 2023. There'll be seven more in 2024, or a couple of parcels and some houses, of course, that are being built right now.
I'm just trying to look at the map. You said lot 17? Because that seems like the same size as most of the other lots.
Lot 17 is this whole big parcel in that northwesterly corner.
Oh, because lots, okay, because I have a lot 17 right down here. Okay, yeah, there's two lot 17s.
That depends on which block you're in.
Lot two.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, makes more sense now. Yeah, that'd be pretty small.
And just to add, I mean, what Greg had just said, will the economy or the market absorb these costs? As Greg had mentioned, I believe these are favorable costs. If we only decide to go with the base bid, and I'm not trying to sway the argument, potentially if we, when we bid the next portion, I would anticipate costs escalating. By how much, I can't say.
We have made the choice in development of phase one and two to get the low profile concrete curb poured and at least that base course of asphalt in. Not every subdivision is done that way, but we've also heard from the realtors and the builders that have been involved that that, that's another. In addition to a drop dead beautiful site, that's a nice selling point, you know? It's not a lot of fun to build a new house and deal with dust and dirt associated with an unpaved street for three or four years. Not unheard of, but it ain't fun. So, doesn't mean that all of the, if the expanded project were approved, doesn't mean we necessarily would have to take curb gutter and pavement beyond that short northward extension of Orchard Lane and then the new east west street, the cul-de-sac street. That, that would still have to eventually be done, but that would shave about $110,000 off the near term cost if you're following. So you'd have, you'd have the next phase partially with curb gutter and street surface in, but the more northerly sections gravelled, all the utilities in, but gravelled.
So. You're looking at awarding the total bid, right?
That's what we're recommending.
Okay, and the future's work is for future, or are we trying to say that that's what we want to do?
Future would be at the earliest 2025.
There's no guarantee though. We're not, we're not trying to say, yes, this is for this year because we have the million dollars and the next year we're committing to this without obviously going through the whole process, but we're kind of saying that we need to do this?
The only committing funds that we would need to do would be for the other private utilities of electric, gas and telecom.
That gets you beyond the million, up to about 1.2?
About 1.25.
Yeah. That would mean if you approved it, you do the full build out of the utility infrastructure, the graded and gravelled streets. That's at that 1.25. But, and that's done, but it would take a subsequent budget decision by the council to basically put in the curb gutter paving and anything else, man?
Finalization of the stormwater facilities.
That's kind of a gotta do, isn't it, from DNR standpoint?
Yep.
For tonight, you were just talking about the base bid? Or the option A is the base bid, option B is base bid plus alternate A?
Oh, alternate two, base bid plus the alternate add items, including alt A for a total of 945,730.
Then we need to come up with.
About $215,000.
I say million.
I was going to, to do the electric, gas and telecom installation.
And that would be budgeted for next year?
That would be, need to be budgeted for 2025.
Or 700,000 if you want to do the electric telecom and have the streets paved with curb and gutter.
But if you did alternate bid one, we would be within budget.
It would be.
If I'm understanding, total project cost would incorporate everything as shown.
For us.
Yep, just results in a higher average cost per lot. That's, that's the tough thing about it.
Well, again, what we were trying to show with the last column is all in because of varying stormwater costs in different phases with the number of lots and things of that nature. So all 32 lots accounted for, all costs accounted for. You're looking at about $69,000 a lot. So if you start breaking it up into various smaller chunks. So yes, the initial cost for the first 11 lots would be about $74,000. So $5,000, $5,000 more than the overall cost. But I think your selling point would be your long term cost of $69,000 a lot.
Just two questions on that then. First off, what do the realtors think about the market and that price? And question two is where are we going to put this money when we sell the lots? What fund is that going to go back into?
I think those are both questions. The first one, we need to do that outreach to the realtors and the home builders to see. Because I don't know the answer tonight as we sit here. The second one, because we, in the past, we have been using the lot sale revenue as general fund revenue. I think we have to dedicate it to the debt service on this, the spend.
Because it's a lot.
It is, yeah. And at the end of the day, we don't want to burden the general taxpayer. But there's also the benefit that we're growing tax base here and it's not. Some ways I wish it was in a TIF because it would help pay for infrastructure. On the other hand, it ain't in a TIF, so it gets built and it's immediately benefiting in a modest way, one house at a time. But face it, most of our tax base is residential. It benefits the tax base right away.
Not to be, not to be a Debbie Downer, but my opinion would be, let's look to finish the whole thing, but let's get some more research done to see the feasibility of selling lots at these prices before we kind of start digging our hole.
We don't, yeah, right. We don't want to build it and then sit here.
For many years to come. That would be my opinion.
That's, that's.
And hopefully we get answers relatively soon so we can hold these costs. Because I think, I believe what Matt says, they're probably only going to go up. But I want to be spending money smartly, because that money obviously belongs to the taxpayers. We all know that. I'm not.
It could pre-sell a lot or two. That would sure help.
Yeah, that would certainly help.
Nobody has suggested that.
Based on Adam's comments, there really is no reason why we have to make a decision tonight. We could do it in two weeks and still achieve what he just said. We're not going to, it's not going to cost us anymore.
Originally, there was a little bit of a time crunch to the award. We were trying to get construction started before the showcase of homes, which was happening the second week of September. The contract documents, though, we had put in there to start construction after the 15th of September to avoid the showcase of homes. So we have, basically, we couldn't delay formal action and take this up at the work session.
I think in fairness to you as the decision makers, we need to do that. By the way, the beautiful house that Jim Reef is building on Lake Breeze at Orchard will be in the showcase of homes. So it'd be really nice to say, and here's phase three, when folks come to visit that. But this is a big deal. No question. It's a big investment we're talking about.
We still might be able to see that too by encouraging.
Oh, I, we darn well better. Because otherwise we could say, isn't this a great neighborhood? It's full and we're sucking wind because we don't have any, we don't have any lots left to sell you. That's not a real compelling.
How much did you say was taxes we were getting from people up there?
The average assessed value up there, and remember our assessments right now are at about 60% of market. The average assessed value for the 21 homes that were fully built and on the rolls last year was about $240,000. And the portion of their, of taxes to the city, each of them was paying was about $2,745. So not insignificant.
Greg.
Sir.
Did you say, I think last week you said something about the lots, the selling price of the lots, 60 to 70,000?
And that, that was our rough estimate and that comports with what Matt has shared. Now, that's all based on averages. We, we've had our city planner in the past, you know, based on square footage, based on the fact generally corner lots are less popular. But, you know, we don't do a flat average pricing, but have tried to prorate it based on lot size and features. So.
I wouldn't make a motion to table if no one has any other comments.
I'll second it with the addition that we get the questions answered in preparation for the work session.
But Scott asked for any other questions, I think, maybe before, maybe because it's non-debatable.
Yeah, are there any other questions from Matt or Greg about this? Otherwise, go for him.
I will make a motion to table to the work session.
I'll second that motion.
We will do, you want to do a roll call or all in favor? Okay, we'll do a voice vote. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see, on to D. Amended resolution regarding ad hoc aquatics committee report and setting conditions for possible placement of referendum question. Seeking voter approval to exceed the city's levy limit to help fund operation of a community pool. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading, adopt the resolution. Greg?
I'll keep it short. Two weeks ago, council did adopt a resolution laying out a timeframe for possibly putting in front of the voters a vote to exceed the city's levy limit to assist with pool operations if indeed there was a successful community fund drive for a new pool. Discussion last week with a representative of the Family Swim Club Board. There was a question about exactly when is that deadline for the April 1, 2025 spring election? And because we had tossed out early January in the discussion at the June work session. City clerk looked at it further and the statute actually provides for the language having to be to the county clerk 70, at least 70 days in advance of the election date. If you put that on the calendar, go back 70 days, it's January 21st would literally be the deadline. Well, that's not exactly early January. When you're talking about an already tight timeframe, it was suggested, well, you know, couldn't we gain a little bit? I volunteered to come back to the council as a little bit of a mea culpa from us as staff, maybe, but saying, you know, if, if it helps, we could probably provide another month in the timeframe. You see there that with the markup resolution, we bumped each deadline back a month. It still requires that a report, if one is funded through a community group, that a feasibility study report be to the council by November 15. It would give you, albeit with Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa and whatever else there is in between. It would still give you a better than two months to evaluate a feasibility study and possibly put it on the ballot. I don't know exactly where things stand with any private community fundraising. Didn't really get a report back other than they're talking with an attorney and looking at options for the existing 501(c), that is the True Rivers Family Swim Club. But in the interest of giving interested folks in the community a chance, I'd recommend approval of this amended resolution. Sorry, it wasn't as short as I said.
So looking for a motion made by Tim, seconded by Adam. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa?
Darlo Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Fitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Scott Stickmister.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Thank you all. On to E, update regarding funding for 2024, 2025 lead water service laterals replacement project. Recommended action is just more for informational and discussion only, no action required.
Right, the council back in June approved a major contract for replacement of lead service laterals at scattered locations around the city. I think about 250 total, 300, 300 total. There was some concern afterwards shared with council about county's position on where their dollars, their ARPA dollars they're sharing with the city could go and wanting the cities matching ARPA dollars to be for the same, either public or private side. Follow up email from my office to the county corp council and their finance director. And thank you also, a discussion I know council membership of Lounas had at county board. We, we've gotten an indication there's some flexibility on the county's part as it relates to this. And we've got a meeting now scheduled for, I think it's the 23rd, next week, Tuesday or Wednesday. And we've got a meeting now scheduled for, I think it's the twenty-third, next week, Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, with those county staff representatives to talk this through. So, uh, we can give you an update at, uh, July twenty-nine work session, but I'm optimistic based on the feedback we got from the county. We can work that through. So the city keeps maximum flexibility on the mix of funds that we use to, to try to fund this and continue to provide twenty-five hundred dollar grants, so-called, to the private property owners.
Does that give us possibly a position and we recoup some of the past dollars that they refused?
That will be a topic of discussion at that same meeting.
That would be the rule.
That'd be great if, if that could happen as well.
Get what we should have got and get what we will get.
Right, that, what Mark's referring to is where the county, uh, opted not to allow their funds to be used to offset city street restoration costs, which are ARPA eligible, based on what we've been told. I don't know that we can go back because we've already submitted for reimbursement, but it'd sure be nice if that balance of a, I don't remember, a hundred twenty thousand, maybe. Could at least, could be applied to more lateral replacements going forward even. So, and we do, I'll say again, we do appreciate the county providing that. Not too many counties uh, provided a match for the local dollars as ours has. So it's looking better. Stay tuned. We'll get a report back first to utilities committee, then to the full council.
Okay, uh, then on to F, update on proposed development project, the Confluence project on city-owned former Eggers Industries downtown site. Again, for informational discussion only, no action required.
Yes, I don't have great forward progress to report on this one. Uh, council on June third did approve, June third or fourth, uh, did approve authorizing a three-month extension to the developer on finalizing their financing and presenting that information back to council. That was to be by July thirty-one. The developer had agreed to pay a thirty thousand dollar non-refundable fee for that. Um, my quick version of it is after having been provided with the draft revisions to the agreement or the restated agreement on May thirty-one, which the council then approved on June third. The developer indicated they were reviewing it, their attorneys were reviewing it. It was a period of two weeks where I did not get return calls or return emails. And I did talk to the developer last week, Friday, and was advised they will not be able to meet that timeframe and will not be executing the extension. Just in case I need to fill in the blank, we also didn't get the thirty thousand dollars, which is predicated on the extension. Am I happy about that? No. Uh, so, um, Mr. Golden did acknowledge that, uh, you know, they still are very interested in the site. They recognize the city isn't going to hold it solely and exclusively for this development. Uh, he did share that they, uh, that his team has signed a contract and made a commitment for uh, a market study specific to Two Rivers to hopefully assist with financing. And emphasized that the, the holdup, as, as he'd shared previously, uh, he attributes to interest rates and the need to run with interest like rates close to eight percent in a pro forma. And, you know, we hear, we hear some rosy statements about where interest rates may be headed, but they're not headed that way yet. So, um, disappointed to report that, but, uh.
Anyone using to start the market study?
I know it was authorized right away. I, I gathered it was probably about a thirty-day deliverable. I'm, I'm winging it, but it was near term. But in the meantime, I, we haven't had time to do more, more marketing of it, but we need to reach out, uh, to other developers. Nobody's going to snap their fingers and say this is going to happen right away, but, um, we can't leave that site encumbered any longer. So I did want to report that. Uh, over on the Westwind Rivers, uh, the West River Lots Project, we have been in communication the last several weeks with uh, Scott Crawford, uh, developers from Milwaukee. They are moving forward. Some of the issues that related to historic site contamination from some of the manufacturing activity that was there uh, have been addressed and they are shooting to close by, I believe it was the end of August. And, uh, I anticipate by the first meeting in August, we would be bringing revisions to the development agreement back to city council. I should mention there, um, they are looking at the potential for two hundred thousand dollars in additional city TIF funding. Um, that's ultimately a council decision. That would be on top of the five hundred thousand that was in the original agreement. Um, the city did make application a couple of months ago for some state idle site dollars to supplement the budget. Though that grant has been approved for two hundred thousand dollars and we have it, an agreement inked for it. So the thought is if the council were inclined to increase the TIF support, we could reduce the TIF commitment to the shoreline infrastructure by two hundred thousand and backfill it with those grant dollars, if that makes sense. So that, that needs to come back for council action, uh, fairly soon.
I don't know, some mix of private versus public?
Market versus.
Yeah, market versus.
Uh, they have, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but we can provide that.
Okay.
It's very heavily weighted toward affordable housing, but there are some market rate units. So that's, that's all I have on that one, but that one is showing some signs now of forward motion after a delay since the end of last year. So that's, that's what I had there. I can roll, any questions? I can roll right into information only. Um, you got next Monday off, at least from your duties as council members, there's no meeting. Uh, work session on the twenty-ninth at six P M. here in chambers. Next regular meeting, Monday, August fifth. Uh, personnel, uh, personal and finance committee members, Bonnie, Adam and Mark. I will get an email out to you about getting personnel and finance together in August, first part of August. Uh, it's time to talk about next year's budget already. It's time to talk about city manager succession planning with my pending retirement next year. Among other, not to mention looking at where we are on this year's budget. So stay tuned.
We do have an H on our agenda and you, uh, obviously don't have it on there. It's the approval of appointment of community development.
Oh, I apologize.
To the architectural control committee for Sandy Bay Division.
That's right. Uh, I would ask that the council approve, uh, appointing, um, Adam Taylor as a staff, additional staff representative there. Uh, our community development director, um, Ms. Rungy did sit on there. And to be honest, I still need to catch up with the C D A member. Uh, but, uh, Adam's official appointment will get us up to a quorum right now. And because we do have a set of plans that group needs to review for the next, uh, SPAC house up there. I apologize, yeah, my print agenda is the earlier version.
No problems. Uh, so then we're looking for a motion to approve that appointment as recommended by the city manager.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Second by.
I'll second that motion.
Shannon, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be an all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so for information only, you got that already, um, closed session?
Closed session, I placed on there expecting there might be some more information available on a possible property acquisition. We've previously discussed. That information was not forthcoming. I know it breaks your hearts right now, but, uh, there's no need for this closed session tonight.
Okay, so then, uh, I will hold us, I, no, I was going to hold this for another two hours yet. Is everyone okay with that? No, uh, recommun, uh, adjournment. Motion made by Tim, second by Adam. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Would remind you.
Good night.